From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California, grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy, and our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning and welcome to the Monday, October 21st, 2024, 9:00 AM special meeting. Good morning, and welcome to the Monday, October 21st, 2024, 9:00 AM special meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. First item is real call.
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Next item is the salute to the flag. It will be led this morning by Supervisor Philip Peters. And please remain standing at the conclusion of that for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Thank you.
My pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's not a long agenda today. We should be done pretty quickly.
Chairman Couch? Let me ask you something, please.
Yes, ma'am. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you so much, Chairman. I am very much looking forward to discussing the matter that is before us today. But I also have a very timely issue that I need to place on the record this morning, and I appreciate your indulgence, Chair, and to my colleagues and to the public. I assure you, this is not a good report, but it is one in which we'll move past very quickly after I place it onto the record, and we'll get back to the business of Kern County. But I need to inform the public of what occurred three days ago here in Kern County. On Friday, October 18th, at approximately 9:00 AM, investigators from the District Attorney's Office attempted to make illegal entry into my office when no one was present. They did not have permission, they did not provide notice to us, and they did not have a warrant. Because the office was empty and locked, they attempted to have the CAO give them access illegally to my office. They had cameras, there was no one in the office, I don't know what they were intending to do, or what they were intending to photocopy. The CAO rightly called County Council and asked if this was appropriate, because it appeared to be inappropriate. CAO appropriately, excuse me, County Council appropriately, and I am forever indebted to our council for doing the right thing and letting the investigators know, they needed a warrant to enter the office of an elected official when they were not present, had no notice, and had no idea that an investigation was underway. When I've made, when I found out this information had occurred, I was rightfully afraid. I immediately called Cindy Zimmer, our District Attorney. I made that call Friday at 12:26 PM. She did not answer, and I left her a message. I informed her that she did not have permission to search my office, we were not providing consent, and that she would need a warrant to search my office. To this moment, she has not returned my call. So several hours later, I sent her a text message approximately 2:30, and I let her know that she did not have permission to search my office, that I would appreciate an opportunity to speak with her about what was going on, and that they needed a warrant. Twice after being informed by County Council that they needed a warrant, and being informed by myself that they needed a warrant, DA investigators appeared at my office and attempted to bully their way past my 21-year-old staffer, telling him they needed to take pictures of my office and of Christian Romo's office. Three times, they attempted to illegally access my office, twice after being informed by the highest law of the land, County Council, that they did not, they needed a warrant, and being told by the supervisor that they did not have consent. The District Attorney responded to my text message when I told her she needed a warrant by saying, "Thank you, I will send the message on." I'm not sure who she's sending the message on to, or who's in charge of that office, because I informed her the message was actually for her. As a legal matter, she does not have a right to enter my office, and I'd like to know what's going on. There was no response after that, I have not heard from her, and I have no idea where this investigation is standing. I have sent screenshots of that text message with Cindy Zimmer to the federal authorities, I have sent it to my friend Rob Bonta at the, excuse me, at the Department of Justice, to let him know that something is happening here in Kern County that is nefarious, inappropriate, and illegal. I would like the public to know that the Prosecutors Association is a major backer, funder, and proponent of my political opponent in this race. So their presence in my office, a part of my opponent's political team and apparatus illegally trying to access my office two weeks before an election, I think it is clear, as Ms. Perez has stated so brilliantly in the past, "Tis the season." And I want to place that on the record, because I believe that Kern County is better than this behavior. I believe these Gestapo tactics that are done by the Public Integrity Unit out of the District Attorney's Office are illegal, immoral, and unethical. I would direct the attention of the federal government to the Public Integrity Unit, who has been attempting to send me to jail for over a decade. Thank you for your time. I lastly want to, with the biggest heart and greatest gratitude imaginable, thank the CAO staff, the County Council who followed the law, they did no favors for me, they simply followed the law, and of course, my 21-year-old staffer, who on two separate occasions in the same day, had armed investigators attempting to bully him and get into my office, not just mine, the leading Democrat in this community, but also Christian Romo's office, the head of the local Democratic Party. If this does not alarm you, it absolutely should. This is illegal, it is unethical, it is on the record two weeks before my election, and I am begging the federal government and the Department of Justice to please intervene, please investigate, and please help me, because I don't know what they'll do next. With that said, let's get to carbon capture. Thank you.
Got it. Okay, we have one item. It is a public hearing. How much of the item do I need to read into the record?
Chairman Couch, I don't believe you need to read the item itself, except that it is Carbon Terra Vault 1 Kern County by California Resources Corporation, a carbon capture project.
Well, you just did that.
I did.
So let me just turn it over to you.
And I believe that you are going to talk Spanish translation.
Oh, that's right, we need to talk about our translators. We have two today, so I'm not quite sure how this is going to work, but they're going to explain that to you. One is Fernando Lopez, and one is Reyna Rodriguez. So could I get you to both come down and tell us how this is going to work? Morning.
My name is Fernando Lopez. I've been hired by the county of Kern to interpret today's, this morning's meeting from English into Spanish, and Spanish into English. In the back in the entrance, there's a table full of boxes of our headphones, so if anybody needs some, they can grab one. Buenos dias, mi nombre es Fernando Lopez, me han contratado para interpretar esta reunión esta mañana. En la entrada atrás hay una mesa con una caja de audífonos. Si necesitan, si quieren participar y hablan solamente español, aquí estamos. Gracias.
Testing. Muy buenos días a todos. Good morning. Si usted aún no ha recibido un diapositivo para interpretación, si los tenemos atrás, ya estamos interpretando. Espero que todos escuche bien. Se escucha bien? Perfecto. So with that, so far it looks like we have everybody set up. I just wanted to give a few verbals, just to help make sure that all this meeting transitions perfectly, and that we are able to interpret everything as much as possible. So just a few signals, only two. So if you are speaking too fast, or if the audience sees that the presenters are speaking too fast, or if you catch yourself, you might see us do this signal. This means slow down. And the other signal that you may see us give, and we'll be sitting at this corner, is this. This means raise your voice, or come up closer to the mic, so that we can hear you. And that's it, and we will have a fantastic meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I will turn it over to Laura Lioviatt, our Director of Planning and Natural Resources.
Good morning, Chairman Couch, members of the board. I'm here today with Craig Murphy, Assistant Director. Project before your board, or the various actions required for the implementation of the Carbon Terra Vault 1 Kern County Carbon Capture and Storage CCS Project by California Resources Corporation. If we could have the overhead on the computer, Craig? This is the first CCS project processed in Kern County, and to date, the first CCS project for permanent underground storage in pore space in the entire state of California that is the subject of an environmental impact report. Are we having technical difficulties? Carbon capture and storage, which is also called sequestration, is the process of capturing with a specialized facility CO2 and storing atmospheric or produced carbon dioxide. In this case, it's being injected underground for permanent storage. This is a simple example of the process being proposed. A source generates CO2, a capture technology is built next to the source, the CO2 is captured by a process, pressurized or compressed, for transport by pipeline to the injection well, and then it is sent over a mile underground to the permanent pore space. This project is different from other conditional use permits your board has considered, as the majority of the surface areas within the conditional use permit boundary will have no building structures or new activities, but we will still have conditions. The terminology of these, this project reflects these differences, so I want to review the terminology in order to provide context. So this is new terminology. This is no different from any other kind of project that we bring forward, wind, solar, where we had to design a terminology so that we can explain the technical aspects. So the CCS underground pore space is the only area underground where the injected CO2 will be permanently stored until it becomes part of the geologic rock. The empty space between the rocks belongs by state law to the surface owner, not the mineral owner. The land area, in this case over 9,000 acres inside the CUP, is the area on the surface within the boundaries of the CUP legal description. The Class 6 injection wells and the CO2 pipeline are specific equipment and wells where the highest potential for leakage of CO2 may occur. And the carbon capture facility is the actual building and equipment that includes the process used to capture that CO2 from the source. This is not normally located next to the Class 6 injection wells, but some distance away at the source, with a CO2 pipeline moving the CO2 to the injection well site. And lastly, the CO2 pipeline is onsite, completely within, in this case, and in Kern County's projects, within the CUP boundary, and it cannot extend outside that CUP boundary into a source that's not included. So I want to show you an illustration. This is an illustration, meaning this is not the actual project that's before you, but it is like that project. So all of the green is the CUP boundary, but you'll notice that there's nothing new happening on that green boundary. Instead, there is a source, it's captured, it's transported, and it's injected, and it could be injected at more than one location, it could be captured at more than one location. The regulation of all carbon capture and storage projects in California has three components. There's the land use, which the Kern County Board of Supervisors, subject to CEQA, includes all the components of the project, including the CO2 pipelines. Then the state of California has an SB 905. It's called the Carbon Capture Removal Utilization and Storage Program to evaluate CCUS and carbon removal technologies. And under the California Air Resources Board, they also determine the permanence for purposes of credits, this is the fiscal part, under the low-carbon fuel standard. A CCS project that wants to use those credits cannot use the facility for enhanced oil recovery, and no carbon capture projects can be used for enhanced oil recovery in California, under state law. None of these actions are subject to CEQA. The state has no regulatory authority over pipelines, with the exception of a legislative moratorium on CO2 pipelines that go outside the facility into another source. And the third part of this regulation is the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Underground Injection Control Permitting Division. They permit the Class 6 injection permits under the Safe Drinking Water Act to protect underground sources of drinking water. They are responsible for the review and monitoring of the carbon dioxide plume area underground to ensure there are no leaks, the formation area is proper for the permanent storage of CO2, and there are no threats to drinking water. The EPA permit does not look at CO2 pipelines. The permit is not subject to either CEQA or the Federal Environmental, NEPA, Federal National Environmental Policy Act. So it is not subject to either of those. While these regulations all work together to regulate and monitor a facility, without Kern County's approval of the project, a U.S. EPA permit cannot be implemented, and CARB has no regulatory authority under SB 905, any aspect of the project. Neither the state or federal government can implement or order a CCS project to be implemented without local land use approval. And based on our zoning interpretation, all CCS projects that involve underground storage of CO2 in unincorporated Kern County require a conditional use permit and a full environmental impact report under Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Determination, my department. And we require that the preliminary application be submitted to the EPA, and all those basic materials submitted to us, along with an application. That provides the basic boundary for the conditional use permit, and the project is conditioned to get a U.S. EPA permit before anything can be instructed or operated if it's approved. If the final EPA permit has a different carbon dioxide plume area approved, then the CUP must be modified at a new public hearing. Sufficient information is provided in the CEQA process with this approach to legally proceed. For all CCS projects, including the Carbon Terra Vault project before your board today, the primary concern is the CO2. Although not explosive, CO2 vaporizes when released in the atmosphere, and is 1.53x heavier than air, and it displaces the oxygen in the air. At lower levels, carbon dioxide is considered minimally toxic by inhalation. Symptoms of CO2 exposure may include headache and drowsiness. Individuals exposed to higher concentrations may experience rapid breathing, confusion, increased cardiac output, elevated blood pressure, and increased arrhythmias. Extreme CO2 concentrations can lead to death by asphyxiation. The displacement of the oxygen also means that internal combustion engines can be rendered inoperable, such as ambulances and fire engines. Staff has been fully aware of this danger from the beginning of the processing of this application, and we have shaped all the conditions, mitigation measures, and recommendations presented to you today with the filter of the danger of CO2. This is the Carbon Terra Vault 1 Kern County CCS project. The project applicant, California Resources Corporation, is proposing this project on 9,104 acres of surface land in the Elk Hills Oil Field. Specifically, the proposed project will be located on the west side of Elk Hills Road and the north side of Skyline Road, within the actual Elk Hills Oil Field designated boundary. Surrounding area comprises agricultural fields, both active and fallow, and other existing oil fields. They include the Midway Sunset Oil Field, McKittrick Oil Field, and Simmerick Oil Field. Skyline Road is closed to public entry at the southern end of the proposed project's CUP boundary. Skyline Road does connect to Elk Hills Road, which connects the city of Taft to the south, and with Button Willow to the north. California Resources Corporation, which while abbreviated to CRC, gated and guarded entrance to the field, is located at the western entrance intersection of Skyline Drive and Elk Hills Road. There are various actions necessary for the implementation of this project. There is a zone change from A1 Limited Agriculture to A Exclusive Ag on 7,130 acres, since Ag A Exclusive Ag is where a CCS project with a CUP has been determined to be compatible. As noted, this proposed project is within an oil field designated by the state of California and the Kern County General Plan for mineral and petroleum resource extraction and other resource uses. The second action is conditional use permits for the facilities to capture the CO2 from the source identified, pre-combustion oilfield gas from Elk Hills Fields. The entire boundary of the underground pore space is included in the 9,104 acres. They are proposing six Class 6 UIC conversion of 10 existing oil wells to monitoring wells, conversion of six existing oil wells to seismic wells, and the abandonment of a number of wells on the surface as directed by requirements and conditions of the EPA. The total capacity of the site is 49.1 million metric tons of storage underground, with injection anticipated to reach capacity in 25 years. with injection anticipated to reach capacity in 25 years, with 75 years after that of monitoring, for a total of 100 years of oversight. A separate conditional use permit for the CO2 facility pipeline to transport onsite for the capture facility to the injection well sites is also before your board. I'd like to note, for the record, we have provided you in the staff report information on the CRC merger with Era Energy LLC. The Carbon Frontier project, which is proposed by Era, is approximately nine miles northwest of this proposed project, and it is on a separate timeline of consideration for various land use permits. It is not on your agenda today. It has not been considered by the Planning Commission. Both projects are being processed separately. They have no shared facilities. They are not dependent on the other for operations. They are both included in their respective cumulative impact list in each individual EIR. Common ownership of the projects is not sufficient evidence under CEQA for determination that the projects are connected. There is no evidence or permitting on record that change either project based on the announced merger, which has been completed on February 7, 2024. The initial source of CO2 is the pre-combustion oilfield gas from infield locations, including uses associated with the existing Elk Hills Natural Gas Power Plant. The Elk Hills Power Plant is rated for 500 megawatts and provides power both for oilfield operations and statewide electricity use. Maximum injection per year from future sources would be up to 2,210,000 metric tons per year, divided between the two formations, 26R and A1A2, being permitted with the US EPA. Again, the facility consists of an underground pore space, approved by the EPA as the carbon dioxide plume storage area, where it can be permanently stored. And all of the surface and pore space for this project is controlled by California Resources Corporation. The project conditions include restrictions within the CUP boundary for the CCS surface land area over the underground storage area, where only limited uses will be permitted. Project would be developed in two phases that capture site infrastructure, facility pipeline, and injection wells. Phase 1 is three new wells plus one modified well. Phase 2 would consist of two modified Class 2 wells originally used for enhanced oil recovery. 10 existing wells would be converted to monitoring wells. Six existing wells would be converted into seismic monitoring wells. Location: The nearest urbanized areas to the CUP boundary of the CCS surface land area and the underground approved storage area are Bakersfield City Center, which is 26 miles away, the city of Taft, which is eight and a half miles away, the unincorporated community of Tuppman, which is five miles away, and the unincorded community of Buttonwillow, which is four miles. The closest school to the injection and capture facilities is McKittrick, four and a half miles away, where there is now only an elementary school. There are no residential structures within the CUP boundary of the surface land area. Proposed project site is crossed by public utilities, including a PG&E electric transmission lines over the Eastern Persian. So I wanted to show you this chart, which is on page 3 and 4 of your staff report. As we talked about with these definitions... Craig, if you could back out a little, so you can, or pull it down a little. There we go. There are three different distinctions. There's a difference, there's a distance to the conditional use permit boundary. There has nothing happened on that boundary. The CO2 is injected over a mile underground, and the, there, that is not the highest danger of leakage. The second is the distance to the injection well, which, as you're injecting into the ground, could leak. And then the distance to the closest facility pipeline. So as you noticed, the closest distance to an injection well is 4.47 miles for the elementary school, and the pipeline is 4.47 miles. You'll note that Buttonwillow Elementary School is 6.15 miles from the injection well, and the facility pipeline is 5.81 miles. As noted, CCS projects have oversight from other government agencies beside this local land use. Page 7 and 8 detail the federal and state permitting. Project construction: Chapter 3, project description of the final recirculated EIR fully describes the project technical details with pages 8 through 23 of the staff report providing a summary description. As a summary, the source of the CO2 for injection as part of this project would be the pre-combustion Elk Hills gas, which is captured and processed at the existing cryogenic and fractionation natural gas plant, which is CGP-1 facility, construction and operating in Elk Hills since 2013, along with the Elk Hills Power Plant. This plant is a facility that uses extremely low temperatures to separate commercially valuable liquid hydrocarbons, known as natural gas liquids, from a natural gas stream by exploiting the different boiling points of each component, and that is the process called fractionization. Essentially, the gas is cooled, condensed the heavier hydrocarbons, which are then further separated based on their boiling points to extract individual natural gas liquids like propane, butane, and other liquids. This has been operating since 2013. No additional sources of CO2 or new development are proposed for the CCS surface land area or outside the CUP boundary by the applicant. So this is the source, an existing plant that has been operating since 2013. Two identical capture, compression, and pumping facilities would be constructed adjacent to the existing CGP-1 facility to capture up to 101,743 tons per year of concentrated CO2 in Phase 1 and 101,743 tons per year of CO2 in Phase 2 from these streams, pre-combustion, associated with the Elk Hills. So they would be captured prior to being processed in the CGP-1 facility. There are five locations for collection. They tie together just northwest of that plant, and they are transported into the plant. The majority of the natural gas, after it is processed, goes to this plant for further processing separation into separate project components prior to sales. Gas injection wells throughout the Elk Hills Oil Field used for reservoir pressure management and for uses of fuel source for the 550-megawatt Elk Hills Power Plant. So this is a process that is already occurring in the oil fields and has been occurring since 2013. This power plant, again, provides about 1/3 of the power to Elk Hills and the other 2/3 onto the California grid for our own electricity use in California via an onsite switching station and twin 230 KV connectors running north of the PGA substation in Buttonwillow. That's eight and a half miles north of the Elk Hills plant. So what is the new capture facility? That project would use a chemical solvent, specifically amine absorption, the process of choice to reduce CO2 from the pre-combustion gas. Aamine-based capture is a well-proven, commercially-available technology. It has been used in the oil fields, and it's been used in the entire petroleum section for over 30 years. Aamine treating is a critical process already for enhancing the safety and reliability of natural gas because it reduces its acid gas content. The CO2 is passed into an absorber unit. Ionized CO2 molecules dissolve into the amine solution. The CO2-laden amine solution passes into a regenerator that strips the CO2 from the solution and recycles it for reuse in the absorber. The project proponent proposes to utilize two existing onsite amine units, one for each site of the CO2 injection network in the first phase and do the same in the second phase. The CO2 is then pressurized for transport in an underground facility pipeline to one of the permitted Class 6 injection wells. The underground pipeline installed as the facility pipeline would be covered in cathodic protection to prevent erosion. After installation, it would be hydrotested to verify its integrity and monitored through the life of the project. All CO2 pipelines will be required by conditions and mitigation measures the project have required safety features for monitoring and immediate shutdown to limit the extent of any release to address the worst-case rupture scenario that was discussed in the EIR. These safety measures will be enforced by the Kern County Fire Department, the State of California Fire Marshal, and it follow all additional federal requirements developed by the United States Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, FIMSHA. Even in the case of pipelines not regulated by FIMSHA, conditions and mitigations are being imposed that gives authority to the Kern County Fire Department. There is a comprehensive list on page 20 through 23 of the staff report. I just want to highlight some. Automatic shutdown valves at intervals determined by the fire department that would minimize the total quantity of CO2 that would be released. Pressure and flow monitoring equipment that would detect abnormal conditions. This is an underground pipeline, not an above-ground pipeline. Upon detection of a possible rupture, the compressors and pumps would automatically shut down, ceasing flow from the pipeline. The automatic shut-off valves would immediately close, isolating the pipeline and limiting the extent of release. Safety monitor and control devices and testing ongoingly ensure the devices operate properly. They will continuously monitor, 24 hours, seven days a week, for any indication of small leaks using monitoring technology and methods, including the use of infrared cameras. Barriers will also be installed to protect the pipeline for vehicle impact or, and alert people to the fact that there is a pipeline underground. The construction and operation of the facility is comprehensively described, detailed, and conditioned in the final recirculated EIR, and this staff report only provides a summary of the project. A final recirculated environmental impact report has been prepared and provided for your consideration, and you have received all documents from the beginning of the processing of this project, starting with the notice of preparation. A full description of that process is included in pages 23 through 24. Apologize, 23 through 34. In addition to the mandated public review opportunities, joint public workshops were conducted to support the US EPA permit process. While not required by CEQA, they are part of the US EPA process and represent a collaborative relationship in the processing and permitting of this first CCS project. The county and the US EPA provided Spanish interpretation and translated materials at one online virtual workshop and three other public workshops in Taft and Buttonwillow, with the public review then also being extended to March 1, 2024. Based on a review of those comments, it was determined to revise the EIR and recirculate it for more public review, from June to July of 2024. All of these versions of the document have been provided to your board when they were leased to the public over the last two years and seven months of processing. The DEIR contains 91 mitigation measures to reduce significant impacts from the proposed project, and a mitigation monitoring program has been included as Exhibit C to your staff report. The DREIR included and analyzed three alternatives: No Project Alternative, Alternative 2, Initial Source Direct Air Capture Alternative, and Alternative 3, Nature-Based Carbon Storage Alternative. Pages 29 through 34 of the staff report describes that analysis, and the environmentally superior alternative, page 33 and 34, is Alternative 2, Initial Source Direct Air Capture. It would substantially reduce operational stationary air emissions would have greater impacts on other resource areas. So required by law, Volume 3, Chapter 7, Response to Comments, was prepared, posted at the county clerk, the state clearinghouse, provided to your board, and mailed to commenters at least 10 days before the Planning Commission hearing. Staff received 2,294 written comment letters on the draft recirculated EIR from federal, state, and local agencies and interested parties during the public review. And each of these comments are addressed in the written response. Staff notes, "The Friends of the Earth comment" was submitted 2,038 times by individuals by email. And the Last Chance Alliance comment was submitted 236 times by individuals by email, the same comment opposing the project. Chapter 7, Response to Comments, includes the following global responses, which address concerns and questions raised by the comments as well as individual responses in the document. Global Response 1, Source Identification. Global Response 2, Extending the Life of Fossil Fuels. Global Response 3, Environmental Justice and Public Participation. Global Response 4, CO2 Pipelines. Global Response 5, Greenhouse Gas Impacts. Global Response 6, Air Quality Impacts. Global Response 7, Geological and Induced Seismicity Risk. Global Response 8, Mitigation Effectiveness. Global Response 9, Alternatives. Global Response 10, Cumulative Impacts. The comments raised both policy questions and issues that appropriately are related to the, to the final recirculated EIR. Staff has provided experts to rebut and counter the claims in the reports submitted by commenter experts on concerns regarding leaks from the facility, pipeline leaks, and seismic integrity. So I'd like to touch on the main opposition comments and our response to those. An issue raised by a number of comments concerns the position that all future sources that could inject into the CTV-1 Kern County project needs to be identified with full permitting already done in the final recirculated EIR. As discussed, the existing Elk Hills field gas streams is the only source that has been identified, and therefore, we analyzed it in the EIR, and we conditioned it. That operation, which is related to oilfield operations, will not provide enough captured CO2 to produce the maximum injection capacity of 2,150,000 tons per year, for which the proposed project is being permitted with two EPA permits. In addition, you are permitting the entire underground warehouse of 49.1 million metric tons. This is analogous to permitting a shopping center. You permit the shopping center. The shopping center may be very large, or Tahone Ranch's Tahone Commerce Center is very large. We condition the size of the buildings, condition the maximum you can put in, but we may not actually have identified exactly what kinds of retail or other sorts of things go into the shopping center yet. This is an underground warehouse for CO2, and only the first source has been identified and analyzed as appropriate. Additional existing and new CO2 sources completely outside the CCS CUP boundary will need to be permitted and conveyed for permanent underground storage. However, no additional infrastructure has been included in this project for such uses. In order to ensure the integrity of the CEQA process and to provide transparency to the public, we have included mitigation measure 4.11-7 land use limits that clearly states that future sources that would use this facility must be in Kern County, unincorporated areas and cities, and are required for full compliance with CEQA. And we have limited, our recommendation to you is to limit what those sources are: green hydrogen, blue hydrogen, biomass carbon removal and storage, cement production, green steel production, oilfield, field gas systems, power plants, direct air capture, and alternative fuel production. All projects in unincorporated Kern County will provide approval of the base district and appropriate zone parcel with CO2 capture and transport requiring an additional CUP and EIR in compliance with CEQA. All the CO2 pipelines would require a CUP and EIR for compliance with CEQA. CO2 from a source in an incorporated city in Kern County must show compliance and the preparation of an environmental document with Kern County as a responsible agency, so that we would have had the opportunity to comment on it, and not an exemption from such review. It restricts any CO2 to be injected, as well to be in compliance with all state laws and federal EPA permits. It is theoretically possible that such a project could come forward, and your board could deny it. These are discretionary actions, and therefore, it could be modified, denied. It could not meet the criteria. Therefore, the discussion of other sources is speculative. We have none before your board at this point, and we have provided in GR1 Source Identification a full legal analysis that it is not required to be done before we bring this underground CO2 warehouse and first source to your board. Comment letters in opposition to the project assert the project will contribute to increased air emission impacts and the health risk associated with such emissions. While the final EIR did find a significant impact, it is based on the very low threshold for the significance finding due to the extreme non-attainment of this air basin. The language of CEQA is inflexible. If you are over the limit, you are significant and unavoidable, and we are required to put all feasible mitigation. It does not matter how much over the limit you are. As shown in Chapter 4.3, Air Quality of the Final EIR and whole of the record, out of the total tonnage which was identified, which is over 122 tons of various criteria pollutants, we're talking about ROG, NOX, PM10, and PM2.5 from construction and year 1 of operations. All but 2 tons of that is from construction. Once the construction ends on the wells, the capture facility, and the pipelines, the yearly impact from operation of the facilities, which is the capture facility, the few employees that are coming, most of which are baseline because they're already coming that are coming, most of which are baseline because they're already coming to the oil field, and employee trips, is less than 2 tons per year. That is the equivalent of 5 buses, of 5 new buses who use diesel. That is the impact. Regardless of the amount, mitigation measure 4.3-5 requires the mitigation of all criteria pollutants from construction and operations to no den increase, no net increase, through a developer mitigation agreement with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. Mitigation measure 4.3-1 to 4.3-9 contains all feasible and reasonable mitigation for impacts to air quality, and has been modified to ensure the funding can only be used in the Kern County portion of the San Joaquin Valley Air District. Staff has noted that the third major opposition is the impacts of the CO2 and the concerns about leaks. We have already noted that the impacts of ventilation at higher concentration levels is a primary concern for staff as well, and the concern of comments is focused on the CO2 pipelines. The final recirculated EIR, Section 4.9 Hazards, has listed and described every CO2 pipeline accident in the United States from 1930 to 2020. There have been no fatalities from CO2 pipelines incidents. The most significant impact over the last 20 years is the Denbury Pipeline rupture in Satasha, Mississippi in 2020. This has been raised in comments and will be raised today as evidence that CO2 pipelines are too dangerous for use in Kern County. The Denbury Pipeline Rupture Federal FIMSHA Investigation is included in the final recirculated EIR as Appendix B2 Failure Investigation Report. Denbury's 24-inch pipeline ruptured, releasing liquid CO2 that immediately began to vaporize at atmospheric conditions, as Mississippi humidity is very high. The pipeline was 1 mile southeast of the community, and over 200 people had to evacuate, including the entire town of Satasha, around 50 residents, and it sent 45 people to local hospitals. There were no fatalities. The failure report is a long list of lax or no regulations, lack of appropriate maintenance of the pipeline, inappropriate location on a steep embankment which collapsed after unusually heavy rains, atmospheric conditions of humidity that delay dispersal, and a complete failure of any emergency notification by Denbury Pipeline Company of the local first responders, law enforcement, or any emergency procedures in place. Staff has reviewed this failure in depth and included protections for each failure noted to ensure that this review of the project under the California Environmental Quality Act does not duplicate the lack of review and regulation in Mississippi. Concerns have been expressed that this is an untested industry and highlights the dependence of the project on state funding under the Low Carbon Fuel Standard Regulations by CARB and the Federal Department of Energy Funding and Credits. Staff has reviewed these issues and notes, "The CCS project is not required to seek these funds to operate, but is a market-driven decision by the company." There are additional requirements that they do seek these funds, such as a CARB Certificate of Permanence for 100 years of a specific quantity of CO2, and enhanced oil recovery cannot be utilized to produce more oil. Staff is not recommending any conditions on this project and assures the permanence of the CO2. While the geology and the permit review, under independent judgment by this department and our retained experts, of the US EPA information and their draft permit appears to provide sufficient evidence this geological formation will retain the CO2 successfully. Your board is not being asked to verify or otherwise ensure that will happen. The final recirculated EIR is clear that CO2 may be vented, the project may not reach full capacity of storage, and the issue is safety if there is a leak, detection of any leak quickly, and appropriate response. The project is required to post a bond with the US EPA for many millions of dollars to ensure a half-finished unsafe project will not occur, and since it cannot be built without a US EPA permit, we are confident that even if it's half-finished or abandoned, it will be sufficiently bonded and managed by the federal government. A recent development that your board should be aware of is that the first EPA-permitted CCS project in Decatur, Illinois by ADM, which is the Archer Daniels Midland Agricultural and Nutritional Company, has received a notice of violation and a shutdown injection. The project has been in operation since 2011. This project is not using the pore space of a depleted oil field, such as that before your board today, but a saline aquifer which is distinctly different. A saline aquifer is a geological formation of porous and permeable sedimentary rocks that contain saltwater or brine. That is not what this site is before your board today. While the full analysis of the violation is not completely public yet, preliminary information that's been released to the public from the EPA say there's a failure to implement the emergency notification process when they had a leak in a monitoring well caused by saline corrosion, and then the project detected a leak at 5,000 feet between different brine formations that was not authorized. No people were affected by the CO2 leakage, and the primary issue, shrinking water integrity and the lack of notification. The issues on this project in Illinois are noted for the record, but not relevant to the project before you today. There is no comprehensive environmental review required by the state of Illinois or the city of Decatur or Macon County. CEQA is site-specific. The specifics of this project are different from the ADM project. The failure of the company to follow the appropriate procedures is noted, and if we receive a saline aquifer CCS project, staff will be informed by the lessons learned by the EPA investigation into the ADM project, which did inject for 13 years until this So how are we conditioning this project? The mitigation measures and recommended conditions reflect the joint regulatory management of the facility. Page 36 of the draft report has a summary of the unique regulatory features of this project. I'd like to highlight a few. There are restrictions on the use of the surface. They will only be allowed to have agriculture, solar, battery, and energy storage, and oil field activities, and unlike other agricultural operations, they will be required to get a site plan so that we are clear they are not drilling into the protected pore space that could result in a leak. There will be fence line air monitoring plan that is managed by the California Air Resources Board. I've consulted with the San Joaquin Air District, who indicates that the California Air Resources Board is the appropriate entity to develop that plan and work through the requirements of the mitigation measure. There are recorded deed restrictions on all the parcels notifying people that there is a carbon capture storage area here that is being monitored for 100 years. We are notifying all the property owners within specified distances of CBT boundary of the date of commencement of injection. It's an annual notification of school districts and state educational authorities that there is a carbon capture storage area so that they can take that into account when planning new schools. There is annual notification of tribes. There is special geo-fencing of the CCS boundary to alert oil field workers and outside people of the boundary of this underground storage. And we will place in the county building permit system, online system, restrictions for every assessed parcel number so that we have ongoing, 100 years is a long time, and 25 years of injection is a long time. So we are going to use every tool we can to ensure that people are clear that this is what is happening in this portion of the oil field. We have many other mitigation measures. I just wanted to address that there is annual funding for special CO2 equipment and training for the fire department, $250,000 a year. In addition, we have added $30,000 a year for Ready Kern, such that the surrounding property owners can be sent a notice encouraging them to sign up for Ready Kern, which would be the, one of the tools that the fire department will use for notification. We are imposing a cumulative impact oil and gas reservoir pore space charge for revenue for public services as pore space cannot be assessed for property taxes, and there will be abandonment of wells which will reduce our revenue. And in addition, we must limit what can be built on the surface. So we're instituting a cumulative in chart, a kick such as we use for the solar projects. One of the most important mitigation measures addresses pipeline safety. We have evaluated the worst-case risk analysis for a major rupture of the pipeline, which just means a size of the hole, doesn't mean the hole, doesn't mean it blows up, it means there's a larger hole that releases more CO2, to determine the safest distance of the pipeline for parcels outside the CUP boundary. Based on information of the health effects of CO2, and you have been provided a sheet from the USDA in your staff report, which talks about CO2 in enclosed buildings, and this is actually outside, staff has determined that under 3% exposure level be used for determining the distance. A comprehensive discussion is included in the final recirculated EIR as well, but let's review that. A 1% to 1.5% exposure actually could occur at a crowded truck stop if you were outside your vehicle, fueling a vehicle, and you might be, you know, might actually just feel a little dizzy. If you were completely exposed to a 1.5%, you actually might develop a headache and increased breathing. Up to a 3% exposure, a person will feel effects such as increased heart rate and increased blood pressure. The predicted scenario for the worst-case release is a 4% exposure level. It's a calculated distance using all the proposed safety mitigations, and calculated a 867-foot distance before exposure to 4%. We believe that the health information concludes that 4% is too high a concentration for exposure. It's immediately dangerous to life and health. If you have a compromised immune system, or you have asthma or other sorts of respiratory, you could be unconscious. It could actually be a threat. It could also cause internal combustion engines on cars and fire trucks to not operate. So we are concluding that a 3% exposure limit for the possibility of a leak, not detected, allowed to continue migration by high winds off-site onto property not owned by CRC, and not, and they have no, and they have no control of it, is the proper concentration, and that should be the appropriate setback. The setback that's been evaluated from the health risk assessment and input from experts is 1,367 feet. So any, those are actually 2 setbacks and 2 mitigation measures. The first is mitigation measure 4.9.4 requires that the pipeline be set back 1,367 feet from any property, any property line outside the CUP boundary, regardless of what's happening on that property. It could be completely vacant land, it could be wildlife habitat, it could be grazing land, it could be just nothing. It does not have to include a sensitive receptor, it is the setback. The second setback is MM 4.3-6, which requires that sensitive receptors be set back 4,000 feet from a Class 6 injection well, and there are 2 reasons for that. The 4,000 feet comes from our analysis of the noise of construction when you construct a well, so we need not be an impact on a sensitive receptor, which would be a single-family home, a school, a place where people, you know, a public mini mart, something like that. There are no such structures within 4,000 feet, but we are assuring that that's true. So there are actually 2 setbacks, 4,000 feet from the Class 6 well, and 1,396 feet for the pipeline from the surrounding property owners. Once again, I mentioned that we are going to add the requirement for Ready Kern. This is a notification letter that the applicant will be required to send, not only letting them know that we are going to start injection, but to encourage them to sign up for Ready Kern, explain to them how to sign up for Ready Kern. The fire department has, if the fire department believed that there was some danger and people needed to be notified, they have many other tools, including closing roads going to each individual parcel. There is no science in the record, or scientific expert that we have found, that says that a CO2 leak from this pipeline or from this injection well can travel further than 2,200 feet. It cannot physically travel 4 miles to the, to the, to the McKittrick School, it cannot travel 8 miles to Buttonwillow. There is no science, and it dissipates down to nothing before it reaches that. We are concerned, however, on those surrounding property owners who have property outside, perhaps they're just recreating, perhaps they're just out, you know, walking over the property that they own. We want to make sure that there is no chance that a concentration would reach them. Project was considered at the September 12th, 2024 Planning Commission with full Spanish translation. Commissioners Nance and Ashley recused themselves from the hearing. A full description of the hearing and concerns raised are in your staff report on pages 44 through 46. After taking public testimony and commissioner discussion, the project was humanously recommended for approval to your board. Since the planning commission hearing, staff has reviewed all mitigation measures and conditions, provided minor clarifications for your consideration in the staff report on pages 46 through 49, and a specific note is further wording in mitigation measure 4.9-4 that details mandatory procedures for reporting leaks and the Kern County Fire Department protocol for response. So we have laid out the applicant's duties that they must immediately let the fire department, the US EPA, and others in the county know immediately about a leak. What are the enforcement ramifications if they don't? If there is a leak and they wait to tell us about it, we can bring before your board an item to stop their operations, and we would. At the end of the day, the enforcement is fully within your board's control. There is, of course, a due process conversation where they can then provide the issues of why that happened, but at the end of the day, we manage many, 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 and the fire department manages, along with other departments in environmental health and public health, many dangerous operations in Kern County. And so this is an expectation that we have of our companies to follow the rules, and to date, we do not have a concern that an oil field company that has been here managing an oil field would not follow these enforcement recommendations. You have received an addendum, and I want to touch on some additional materials you've So correspondence was received from Earth Justice, representing a coalition comprised of the Center for Biological Diversity, the Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment, Central California Environmental Justice Network, Central Valley Air Quality Coalition, and Sierra Club. You received those comments. Attached to it was the actual references printed out. We've attached a link. You received this, and we provided it to your board and the public on Friday at 2 minutes to 5 o'clock. So it has been provided to your board with sufficient time for review. We do not believe that there is any new information in these comments. We have sufficiently reviewed them. We have provided you the information in the addendum on where you can locate the answers to their comments and questions. And I do want to note that CEQA does not require a written response to every comment that is submitted. However, we have done our due diligence to provide you those, point to you those responses. In addition, the Sierra Club has submitted an online petition of signatures of 1,187 individuals from around the United States, perhaps the world, I only glanced through it, who are opposed to the project, and you have been provided that list and the, the letter. They assert inadequacies in the air quality, the risk, not met the federal regulatory standards, and will extend the life of oil and gas productions. We have provided answers to all of those comments, and that, those are inaccurate statements in regards to deficiencies of the EIR. In addition, you have received a letter of support from the Hispanic Chamber of Kern County, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and a letter of support from Kern Tax. Staff has evaluated the project in addition to the required findings in the zoning ordinance for compatibility with the location, existing oil field uses, safety for distances to surrounding communities, schools, and private property owners, and sufficiency of the 144 conditions. Staff has determined there is sufficient evidence in the record to make the required findings and recommend approval of the project. In support of this recommendation for approval, the required 1509-1 Findings of Fact and 1509-3 Statement of Overriding Considerations have been provided in Exhibit A and B, along with a mitigation monitoring and reporting program in Exhibit C for the steps to compliance of the 91 mitigation measures. of the 91 mitigation measures. As you know, the final recirculated EIR shows that after all feasible and reasonable mitigation, impacts will remain significant for both project and cumulative impacts. Those are listed on pages 25 and 26. And as permitted by law, your board can consider social, economic, and other benefits that the project will bring that outweigh these remaining significant and unavoidable impacts. As detailed in the 1509-3 statement of overriding considerations, implementation of the project will support possible speculative diversification of Kern County industries for a carbon management future. Through mitigation measures, it is possible that those projects could provide additional economic benefits. However, the direct benefits are $59.7 million of total revenue from the cumulative impact oil and gas reservoir pore space charge over 25 years of injection, $280,000 a year for the Kern County Fire Department for CO2 training, equipment, and operation, and $7 million over 25 years for the Ready Kern emergency notification, along with one-time sales tax payment of $2 million for the carbon capture facility and related oil field. In developing this recommendation, staff has reviewed all the comments submitted in opposition. The comments emphasize this technology as being untested and not needed to address climate change, and emphasize that it prolongs fossil fuel use and benefits an oil and gas company. The process may not have been done in California, but it's been done successfully around the world for over 30 years, with projects still in operation of collecting CO2 and stirring it permanently underground. With the regulatory framework, both the state of California and the US EPA, UIC program, the California Environmental Quality Act, and our zoning powers, there are sufficient safeguards to regulate this land use. Kern County began wind power in the 1980s and large-scale solar in California in 2009. When the first large-scale solar project in Kern County, it was many thousands of acres was being processed. We had projects that were thousands of acres. The largest one in the US was only 360 acres, and it was called an untested industry as well. They could go bankrupt. They used reflective mirrors that could break easily. They could cause glare that could interfere with all sorts of military issues. But your board determined policies, and we conditioned the projects to fit our communities and our needs. And now, over 15 years later, Kern County has over 21,000 megawatts of wind, solar, and battery storage of all types operating safely, and we did say no to some that were not in a location that supported your board's policies. And they are now providing energy for all of California and producing jobs and revenue for essential services for our community. As your board is aware, California is the seventh-largest producer of crude oil among the 50 states, falling from third in the last 12 years, and the state ranks third in crude oil refining capacity. In addition, California is the largest consumer of jet fuel and the second-largest consumer of motor gasoline among the 50 states, only surpassed by Texas. Clearly, there is still demand for fossil fuels throughout California and neighboring states. And while the policies of the state of California is to phase out domestic production of oil and natural gas, that is not the policy of your board. Overall, the oil and gas industry contributed $13.5 billion into the Kern County economy, but that contribution is in decline due to policies of the state of California. This project supports an oil company using their assets for investment to further invest in Kern County. And while these investments may result in new industries that need carbon capture story, that is speculative. What is not speculative is the Kern County's future based on the state of California policies is in decline without innovative reuse by the oil industry for what will become stranded assets of land and facilities. The project provides a possibility, but not a certainty, of a Kern County enhanced economy ahead of the state of California's revenue-destroying policies on fossil fuels implemented to completely take effect by 2045. Based on the whole of the record, staff and the planning commission recommends approval of the zone changes and additional use permits, subject to all requirements of the final recirculated EIR mitigation measures and conditions of approval. And when you are ready, I have a slightly revised recommendation. That completes my presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions before we go to the public hearing? Okay. Does the applicant have a presentation? No?
Yes, the applicant is here to speak.
Want to make, make known, please step to the microphone and proceed when I finish here. I want to let you know that there's been a request by some folks in opposition to have the exact same amount of time that you have, that you take this morning for your presentation. We're still considering that. And there are, she is going to speak on behalf of several groups. I have a feeling that some representatives of those groups are going to want to speak as well. So I'm just, I'm letting you know that that request is out there, so please proceed. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for having us this morning. My name is Francisco Leon. I'm president and CEO of California Resources, representing 2,300 employees and contractors throughout the state, the majority here in Kern County. As the leader of CRC, my job is to innovate, create change in the energy sector, and ultimately navigate the energy transition. An energy transition that has to deliver on several fronts. It has to be good for the environment, we're very focused on that, but it also has to be good for people. That means high-quality jobs. That means low cost of energy produced here locally. We want to get started with our projects with the carbon capture and storage project that outkills. It is the first time we're bringing this technology to Kern County, but CCS has been done very safely and effectively for over 50 years throughout the world. The government of the US, the federal government, has significant financial incentives to do CCS. The government of California talks about CCS as absolutely critical in order to achieve the energy transition. There's no place better to get this started than in Kern County, the capital, the energy capital of California. So this project is certainly good for our company and our employees, but it's also really important for Kern County. We deliver on a number of fronts, and it's going to be a project that has multiplicative benefits for the county. First of all, it's going to bring growth. It's going to bring new businesses. It's going to bring new jobs, which we need. The oil and gas industry pays about a 65% better salaries than the average of other industries. When we talk about an energy transition, the jobs have to be just as good. They cannot be just one-for-one. They need to be high-quality jobs for our communities. A project like CCS also is good for the environment. It reduces CO2 and other pollutants from point sources, from factories that are creating great products in the state of California. We're also very excited about our project because it's a way to directly invest in the Kern County community. You can see this in our community benefits plan on our website. We made this public. We're going to give back to the community, this community, for every dollar that we spent doing CCS. We're also not, we're not just focused on current jobs. We're focused on future jobs. We're investing with the Kern Community College District to develop a carbon management institute so that our students, our future generations can have a career in carbon management. We're also working with the trades, trying to make sure the skills that they bring forward can do a good job in this community. As a key partner of this community for many, many years, I can tell you that we're going to prioritize the health, safety, and well-being of our communities. This project has the opportunity, and what we envision is for Kern County to be the national leader in carbon capture and sequestration. The state of California wants an energy transition. This is how you do it, with projects that deliver on every front. We're ready to go. We're excited to be here. And before, if you allow me a couple more minutes, I'd like to do the direct translation and deliver the same talking points in Spanish. So, para mi gente que prefiere español, me gustaría compartir directamente los beneficios de nuestros proyectos. Soy Francisco Leon, presidente de California Resources. Represento a más de 2,300 empleados en California, la mayoría aquí en California, aquí en Kern County. Como el líder de esta empresa, estoy enfocado en tener una transición energética exitosa que entrega beneficios ambientales pero no se olvida de nuestra gente. Tenemos que mejorar los trabajos, hay que tener buenos sueldos, buenos trabajos, y hay que generar más energía local. Esa es la solución de todos los temas que tenemos. Por qué la energía está disparando en costos, hay que bajar el costo. Entonces bajo mi liderazgo tenemos que empujar estas tecnologías y traerlas a Kern County. Hay muchos beneficios. Este es un proyecto multiplicador. Es un proyecto que tiene apoyo del gobierno federal. De hecho tienen incentivos muy importantes, dinero que podemos traer a Kern County. El gobierno de California dice que es esencial tener carbon capture para poder avanzar todos los objetivos de la transición energética. Estos proyectos son buenos para el medio ambiente, bajan la contaminación de las plantas industriales, pero muy importante trae trabajos bien pagados. Tenemos inversionistas que quieren traer cientos de millones de dólares a Kern County y generar trabajos para nuestra gente. Estamos enfocados en la generación de hoy y la del futuro. Estamos invirtiendo en desarrollo de carreras técnicas con el Kern County, Kern Community College District para generar carreras técnicas para nuestros futuros estudiantes para que puedan tener trabajos manejando el carbono. Esta tecnología es nueva para Kern County, pero nosotros y muchas otras empresas lo han hecho a través del mundo por más de 50 años. Es una tecnología que tenemos el compromiso para entregarla siempre con los estándares ambientales más elevados, y eso es lo que pueden contar con CRC. Somos una empresa seria y responsable. Somos socios, somos vecinos, y queremos el bienestar de nuestras comunidades. Estamos listos para arrancar, y les agradezco mucho su apoyo. Thank you for your time. Good morning.
Thank you very much. I don't, I've forgotten your name. We haven't, we haven't met. Who's the individual that wanted to speak? So Eliana, explain to me again, you need how many, how many minutes? He went four, he went about four and a half minutes.
I could do the same time.
Okay, but yeah, and you need, what we, I want to make sure everyone knows, we're not setting the precedent here, because I'm sure you represent, tell me all the groups you're representing today.
I am only here on behalf of community members and the Central California Environmental Justice Network.
You sure?
Yes.
Was there a different story that was, that was told before? Maybe not by you, but by someone else, that you were representing several groups?
I apologize for the confusion. I am only here on behalf of Central California Environmental Justice Network and other community members that are not here today.
Interesting. Okay, proceed.
Okay. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Who, by the way, who told us that you were here on behalf of several groups? You or others?
I'm not sure what you're referring to. I think it was me and my coworker, or my fellow coworker.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize for the confusion again, and thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Eliana Navarro. I'm a community organizer with the Central California Environmental Justice Network. I'm here today to share some concerns, some community concerns from folks that are not here today. Unfortunately, they can't afford to be here. They're out in our agricultural fields, working to put food on our tables. And so to begin, I just want to emphasize the history of failure of CCS projects. CCS projects have not hit their targets in carbon capture in other parts of the country. CRC's math suggests they won't even see the net carbon benefits for many years. Leaks at the country's first commercial CCS project that was mentioned earlier by Archer Daniels Midland was caused by corrosion of inadequate steel used in their injection wells and is posing threats to groundwater. The EPA has concluded that dozens of planned projects contain dangerous design flaws. I also want to mention the risk of safety. It was mentioned earlier, and I want to emphasize that this risk is not to be taken lightly. These risks are higher for workers in neighboring communities, communities that are already vulnerable and are underserved. CRC has unreliable record of emission control. According to a Cal OES report, 113 confirmed spills and leaks from CRC infrastructure have occurred since 2014. A few examples of that is on June 11, 2024, 5,460 gallons of oil-water mix spilled. Another example, on June 17, 2024, a pipeline failed and 84 gallons of crude oil spilled into a waterway here in Kern County, five miles away from McKittrick. Thirty-six OES reports on behalf of CRC this year alone, over 1,600 barrels released. I also want to touch on the jobs and community benefits. This CCS project will only bring 10 full-time jobs, no long-term jobs, specific skills that community members do not have. CRC is a primary beneficiary of this community benefits plan. No representation of a community member or community members are part of this plan. They're all for special districts. And lastly, I want to emphasize, and I want to defend, the comments that were mentioned on September 12 from Delano, Shafter residents, and Arvin and Lamont residents. Comments were made that they shouldn't be complaining about this project, that this project won't affect them. And I just want to defend that it's okay for them to come here and be concerned about this project. Carbon Tarval will incentivize new polluting infrastructure throughout Kern County. It is entirely reasonable for all residents to come here and share their health, health concerns. This will not clean our air. CCS creates new pollution sources, which will make community health worse. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Again, that is all.
Thank you.
Now.
Chairman, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. The reason I didn't recognize you is because you didn't punch in. I know that I missed that once in a while, but supervisor press.
Thank you so much. So I want to apologize to the crowd, since making my statement to you this morning. The DA has arrived at my office with a warrant to search my office, mine and Christian's office. So I'll be heading up to have to deal with that right now, and I'm very, very sorry about that. But I want to conform the public once again that this entire operation was teed up last time we were here for board session by Mr. David Bruss, the former employee of Supervisor David Couch, the current political and business partner of David Couch, to tee up the item so that the DA could illegally search my office.
Look, I, I, I left this alone. He is not a business partner of mine. He worked in my office. What?
Yes, he is. He's your current business partner. He's your current political partner. He teed up the matter for the DA. Now I have to go deal with it.
Hang on. That is false. We have no business engagements together whatsoever, number one. Number two, what does this do to our meeting if we only have three people here with this particular hearing?
I really am sorry. I have investigated this in my office report two weeks before the election.
It's simply a majority vote.
All right. Thank you very much. I apologize for that. We will continue now with, by the way, we have seats reserved in the front row if you would like to speak. We would ask that you come to the front row so we can get you to the microphone quickly.
Chairman, Chairman Couch, can I clarify something while they're coming up to speak? We received a letter that is in your staff report, request, making the request that you addressed, that they be that they be provided, that three or four or five groups in this letter, it's in the back of your staff report, be provided that. So that may been part of the confusion.
Well, it was confusing because they had requested it and then we were told at the, at the microphone that they had not requested it.
That's correct. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Please quiet down a little bit. We're going to try to get through this as quickly as we can. Again, there are now no seats in the front row, but as they open up, please feel free to come down and take a seat so we can get to the microphone quickly. Supervisor, good morning.
Good morning. Supervisors, Chairman Couch, members of the board, you have an important decision to make today.
We know who you are, but you got to tell us who you are. For the record.
My name is Pete Parra. And I'm a retired Kern County employee. Worked for the county for 37 years, mostly in workforce development at the local level as the Director of Employers Training Resource. Also, my last eight years as Kern County Supervisor. So I know the importance of this project before you is of important part of your job and important part of the future of Kern County. For those who don't know part of my history, my family moved to Kern County in 1944, the year I was born. And we were seasonal farm workers. Our first home was a army surplus tent that we lived for the first five years in East Bakersfield. We followed crops from Bakersfield all the way up to Santa Rosa. So I understand the issues of farm workers and their health and welfare. I see this project as a win-win-win situation for Kern County and its people. As Director of Employers Training Resource, I saw several actions that took place on the west side that affected that community. So people ask me why I'm speaking today.
Mr. Parra, I really hate to do this to you, but you've gone over the two minutes and we're going to try to get through a whole bunch of people here today.
In 1981, when the price of oil.
That doesn't sound like you're wrapping up.
I still say it's at 24 seconds.
Well, that's 24 seconds over, but you, go ahead and wrap up.
Okay, wrap up. I am concerned about the employment and the financial concern situation and the catastrophe of the west side. It's affected the community, its recreational services, its schools, and the people on the west side in jobs, education. And those are the two areas that I have dedicated my life in, education and jobs. And if families are to prosper and grow in Kern County, the families and the families of farm workers, it is important that Kern County protect the future of the west side. Because the west side is part of Kern County. The other part, I would say, it provides a financial incentive for the monies that have been taken away from the state. On, if you go back to EREF, the money that was taken away from Kern County, your inability to tax solar and wind. This is an opportunity and Lorelei and her staff have done a tremendous job at making sure that Kern County gets the money to support that project.
Thank you for your confidence.
So, thank you for the opportunity. I just wished I would have had a little more time. But I understand.
You had double what we give.
I understand. I understand. And, and the other reason, and the other reason I'm here today, a good friend of mine, Les Clark, told me, Pete, you need to get involved with this project and see how you can help the people of west side and Kern County. And I'm leaving it in your hands to make the right decision. And I know you will. Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to get this under control. We do our best to keep this to two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Lori Pesante and I'm a resident of Bakersfield. What we have here today is a failure of integrity. That seat is empty because apparently somebody thinks it's okay to search somebody's office without a warrant. Last time I looked, this is America, okay? That seat is empty for similar issues that are deeply questionable. Your own agenda cites the government code that says that you're required to disclose any campaign contributions over $250 from applicants. The people you appointed to your planning commission failed to do that. Your county staff failed to do that. At the planning commission for this agenda item, those two seats were empty. Because Mr. Nance was absent, according to the vote procedures, it said they were absent and nobody made a public statement about there being a conflict of interest whatsoever. Mr. Ashley was also absent. Nobody made a statement about why he was absent, even though it was clearly a conflict of interest. He works for CRC. How is it okay that you all get to take money from these oil companies? Take money from these oil companies and appoint people who work for them? We were asked, and the planning commission was asked, to consider safety. Not a single person on your planning commission considered the fact that this project emits three times the greenhouse gas emissions that it is going to sequester theoretically. We are already harmed. Our safety is already harmed. We have extreme drought, extreme heat, people are dying, valley fever is up because of all of the crazy weather events we're experiencing, and we have wildfires. If even one single firefighter dies because climate change has been exacerbated by these false solutions, it'll be on you. And the entire process renders this completely illegitimate, any decision you make here today.
Thank you very much for your comments. We're not applauding, by the way. By the way, if people are going to come up here and accuse us of things, then it's, you know, the First Amendment works two ways. Often people forget that. Anybody here take any contributions from any, from, from the applicant?
No.
No, of course not. That's on the record. We have not taken that or we would recuse ourselves. That's the way it works. Didn't happen. A lot of accusations are made. That one is false. The, I think the accusation was also made that the planning commissioners received political contributions. They don't run for that office. They're appointed. So that's not true. And I don't know that if you're not present at a meeting, you can actually make a statement about any conflict of interest you might have about an item if you're not there. Have you ever heard of that happening before, someone making a statement at a meeting? Excuse me, I'm speaking at a, at a meeting that they are not, they're not in attendance at? Well, now she says they're at the meeting. A minute ago, they were, a minute ago, they were not at the meeting. Now they are at the meeting. Interesting. All right. We're off to a good start today. Good morning.
Good morning. I am so pleased to be with you all today. I'm Dr. Sherry Hornbunk and I'm the Executive Director of the Taft College Foundation and Institutional Advancement for West Kern Community College District. I'm here to say that I've done a lot of research on this and David Couch, you know that. I am very interested in the air, right? And so I think I am in complete agreement with what we should be doing. CRC, I think you're making the right move because everything is a piece of the puzzle that's going to make our air a little bit better. Do we have challenges? Yes. We're located in a cupboard where a lot of the particles just kind of bump up into it. We have a hard time cleaning the air. But according to my last Kern Economic Development Board meeting, Richard Chapman, the president, told us that our air has improved here in Kern County by 50% over the last 10 years. And I said, how? David Couch filled me in. He said, yes, you know, a lot of people are making changes all the way down to the older vehicles that are getting extra smog components to fix, you know, the emissions they have. I think this is a strong piece of the puzzle. I think it's the right thing to do. But we need more work. We need to get more innovative and innovation is what it's all about. And I think this is very innovative. So I hope that you support CRC's move for the carbon capture tarval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hornbunk. We'll be next. Morning.
Good morning. Good morning Chairman Couch and members of the Board of Supervisors for Kern County. I'm Elva Martinez with the Arts Council of Kern, speaking on behalf of our Board of Directors and Jeanette Richardson, our Executive Director, who is unable to be here today. I'm here, I'm here to share our sincere thank you to CRC and the Kern County Board of Supervisors for their ongoing support of the arts, education, and in collaboration with Supervisor Perez for rehabilitation programs in juvenile justice here in Kern County. Your dedication to these initiatives has truly changed lives and we will be able to continue seeing troubled youth succeed. We are especially grateful to CRC for their commitment not only to the arts but also to improving our air quality. They're showing that investing in our environment and our community's well-being go hand in hand. Your leadership and vision have and will create a lasting impact. And we are proud to continue this important work alongside. As the state and local arts organization, the Arts Council is delighted to see creativity and critical thinking expand in the energy industry, leading to creating more creative economy jobs for the future. We see a great deal of innovation with the new initiatives of carbon capture that can possibly create a better quality of life for Kern County residents. Thank you for helping us make Kern County a place where art, education, and sustainability thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be next.
Good morning. My name is Eric Vargas. I'm going to make my comment in Spanish. That's okay for you guys.
Sir, could you repeat your name? I didn't catch it.
It's Eric Vargas.
Vargas, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm going to make my, my comment in Spanish.
And then in English?
Just in Spanish, just because of the time.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right. Thank you. Buenos dias, members of the Consejo de Supervisores del Condado de Kern. Mi nombre es Eric Vargas y soy el gerente de desarrollo y negocios para energías renovables de CRC. Llevo más de diez años trabajando en CRC y cuento con más de 20 años de experiencia en la industria energética. Mi familia es originaria de México y tengo la fortuna de criar a mis tres hijos en el condado. Me siento orgulloso de formar parte de CRC, una compañía con un historial de seguridad exitoso y comprometida con la seguridad de sus empleados, la comunidad y el medio ambiente. Como gerente de negocios para energías renovables en CRC, reconozco de primera mano la necesidad de desarrollar proyectos que apoyen los objetivos de descarbonización de California. Nuestro estado tiene uno de los objetivos de descarbonización más ambiciosos del país, lo que requiere soluciones reales para combatir el cambio climático. El proyecto CTV One propuesto ante este consejo es crucial para combatir el cambio climático de madera inmediata y ayudar al estado a alcanzar sus metas de descarbonización. Permitir la captura y el secuestro de emisiones de gases de efecto invernadero como el dióxido de carbono en nuestro condado no solo ayudará al estado a cumplir sus objetivos, sino que también atraerá inversiones que promoverán el desarrollo económico del condado, creando empleos bien remunerados y nuevas oportunidades de negocio dentro de la comunidad. Por todo esto, apoyo firmemente a la aprobación de este proyecto. Gracias.
Hang on one quick second. I just want to make a comment. Supervisor Flores had to walk off for a second, but he can hear the meeting in the foyer over here and you can also even hear it in the bathroom. So he's attending still. So you're going to translate for us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning. To the supervisor of Kern, I am the manager who works in development for renewable energy with CRC. I've been working with CRC for 20 years and so I have more than 20 years of experience within the energy industry. My family is originating from Mexico and I have the great fortune of being able to raise my children here in the county, my three children here in the county. I am super proud to be able to be a part of CRC, which is a company that has a long history of security and being committed to the security and safety of its employees. As a manager for the businesses within renewable energy with CRC, I know firsthand the need of being able to develop projects that support the objectives of decarbonization within California. Our state has one of the objectives of decarbonizing this country and it requires a lot of real solutions to be able to combat climate change. The CTV One project that is proposed before the council is crucial to combat climate change in an immediate way and to help the state to be able to achieve its decarbonization objectives. Allowing the sequestration and, uh, sequestration, uh, sequestration and capture of carbon as well as the carbon dioxide, which are the greenhouse gas emissions, will not only allow it to be able to achieve its objectives but also allow to develop the economy within the county by creating well-paid jobs and new opportunities for business within the community. Because of all of this, I firmly am in support of approving this project. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Morning.
Good morning. Good morning supervisors. My name is Cory Morris. I am before you today to express my support for carbon capture, carbon tarval CCS project on Oak Hills. I'm a parent, a father, a small business owner, veteran advocate, and the mayor of the city of Maricopa, presumably the hardest economically disadvantaged city in Kern County. I'm also a lifelong resident of western Kern County, having grown up in Taft, Maricopa. Maricopa is a proud oil-filled town, producing energy for over a century. Although this specific project doesn't touch Maricopa's boundaries, the unrealized potential for light and heavy industries complex that carbon capture creates is something that we are monitoring closely as the oilfields around Maricopa mature and produce less. Anytime I evaluate support of a project, I weigh every one of those roles I mentioned heavily to make sure I am doing what is best for my family and my community. As the state continues to make energy production in Kern County a tough space to operate in, this project has a huge benefit as I see it. It will diversify our economy as the first of its kind project in California while making current carbon-producing industries less harmful to our county. Carbon Tarval and CRC are already leaders in the energy sector and they work with potential hazardous carbons in a safe and productive way every single day. Adding to my confidence is the fact that your staff have implemented several conditions that will put the community's safety first. I look forward to seeing Kern County's diversification with this project and the opportunities that will exist for the next generation of workers. Thank you for your time. I ask for your vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be next. Morning.
Good morning. Honorable Couch, Chairman of the Board and the other Board of Directors. Thank you Lorelei and to all of you, the staff and those from the community who are here. My name is Dee Slade. I'm with the African-American Network of Kern County. I have had the pleasure of watching this community move forward at a very fast pace. And let me tell you, in 1889, there would not be a Kern County because Bakersfield burned down to the ground. Four, five hotels they lost, 44 businesses, 160 structures. The only thing left was the water. The only thing left was the water tower and the Presbyterian church. So we moved to 1952, to the earthquake. Then you move to the 80s and the 90s. And in 1994, I had the pleasure of working with the late Bob Price, late Supervisor McDermott, and Peterson, and other individuals in putting the vision for this community, Kern County and city, in play so that it would not end up being a ghost town, a ghost Kern County. And it took like-minded individuals, like all of us in this room. Fearful, yes. I am fearful because I represent a culture that never had an opportunity, the African American culture in the United States and as well as in the county of Kern. Cotton pickers we were that came here. We were your migrant workers. But guess what? Because of visionary and individuals with a vision and inclusiveness and identifying the fears and the concerns of everyone, they move forward. So this project is one of those. It's a vision for Taft to come back. It's a vision for Maricopa. One restaurant that I noticed named Tina, nothing else as you're passing through going to Santa Maria. They need to come back online. They need to be part of Kern County and not talked about. We need to see them as part of Kern County. And I humbly, humbly respect the concern of the migrant workers, but I'm telling you, I come from a history of migrant workers. Don't be afraid.
Thank you.
Ask questions and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Kern County Board of Supervisors. My name is Gloria Williams, and I am pleased to represent the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County. It is an honor to be here to speak in full support of California Resources Corporation's Carbon Terror Vault One project. As a local resident and an employee of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County, I speak to the certainty that we are excited about the potential of CRC's Carbon Terror Vault One project. The Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County provides essential benefits to local youth, families, and community stakeholders, and we depend upon reliable energy resources to assist in our efforts. As a nonprofit in Kern County, serving in 11 school districts, 71 school sites, and providing a safe space for approximately 8,000 youth daily, we believe CRC's Carbon Terror Vault One project will equip our organization with a local and responsible energy source that's beneficial for our after-school programs where we can continue to engage at-risk youth in constructive, character-building activities. CRC's Carbon Terror Vault One project is an investment in Kern County's future and will help reduce carbon emissions and advance clean energy projects in the state. This project will provide real solutions for the future of energy production in Kern County and will also create jobs and business opportunities through the development of a new carbon management economy. As President and CEO of CRC, Francisco Leon stated, this project will bring innovation, growth, and an economic impact to our community, and it will be done safely and responsibly. To that, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County support this vital investment in our community and the approval of CRC's Carbon Terror Vault One project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you. Who's next?
Good morning. Mi nombre es Anibal Araya. Trabajo para CRC y vivo en el condado de Kern, con mi esposa y mis dos hijos. CRC es una empresa que busca aportar valor para el condado de Kern, trabajando de forma segura, garantizando la salud y la integridad de las personas, y preservando el medio ambiente. Este proyecto de CRC va a capturar y almacenar dióxido de carbono. Esto es una solución real para preservar el medio ambiente. La ciencia detrás de la captura y el almacenamiento de carbono es extremadamente buena y real. El proyecto de CRC nos ofrece una solución genuina a algunos de los problemas que enfrentamos a tratar de abordar el calentamiento global. La aplicación de esta tecnología nos da la única esperanza de mantener la temperatura del planeta a un nivel seguro para nuestros hijos. Necesitamos desarrollar formas de capturar y almacenar dióxido de carbono, y es por eso que yo apoyo la aprobación de este proyecto. Muchas gracias por su atención. Thank you.
My name is Anibal Araya, and I work for CRC, and I live in the county of Kern with my wife and my two children. CRC is an agency that wants to bring value to Kern County, working in a safe way, guaranteeing health and the integrity of people, and preserving the environment. This CRC project will capture carbon dioxide, and this is a great solution to help preserve our atmosphere. The carbon capture is a really good thing, and it's real. The CRC project offers us a genuine project or solution for those of us that want to deal with the change, the changes happening with our atmosphere, and this will help us keep our atmosphere in a good situation for the future of our children. Because this project is helping with the carbon capture, this is one of the reasons why I am supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Christine Diaz. I'm the field representative for Senator Shannon Grove. I'm here on behalf of the senator. She wanted to be here, but she had previous commitments, so I'm going to read her statement. I strongly support California Resources Corporation Carbon Terror Vault One project. The work CRC has done in collaboration with the county demonstrates a commitment to economic growth. This project has the potential to capture and permanently store millions of tons of carbon dioxide. Additionally, CTV One will create new jobs opportunities in Kern County, providing a boost to the local economy. Kern County is leading the way in innovative projects like this, and I encourage the community to lend their support for this important initiative. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is George Harmer. I'm with Californians for Energy and Science. We are a nonprofit--
I'm sorry, sir. Your last name, I didn't hear.
Harmer.
Thank you.
Not Hammer, Farmer, Harmer.
Got it.
With Californians for Energy and Science, we are a nonprofit organization that's focused on researching the net costs and benefits of any energy produced here in California versus energy produced outside our state. I want to make sure everyone knows that our membership is comprised of scientists, environmentalists, geologists, no lawyers on our, but we do have academia from not only here in California but around the United States. And we're focusing on, like I said, the net cost of producing energy here in California versus around the U.S. and from other countries. The carbon capture project holds significant promise in helping our community address its carbon emissions and contribute what contributes to global climate change. By capturing CO2 emissions from local industrial process and power generation facilities, we can reduce our community's carbon footprint and play a part in mitigating the impacts of climate change here in our community and be leaders at the forefront of this technology here in California. I want to leave something for those folks that are on the other side in opposition today. I want to give kudos to CRC and all that they've done in the county, what has gone into this project, the EIR, and looking at all facets of this project. The definition of science is the systematic study of the structure and behavior of the physical and natural world through observation, experimentation, and the testing of theories against the evidence obtained, the world of science and technology. So I thank you for looking at the science, looking at the technology, and putting those things at the forefront and making your decisions today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, County Board of Supervisors. My name is Mario Salinas. I am the president of Laguna Local 220 and proudly representing over 2,500 dedicated members. I too come from a migrant family background. My parents worked throughout the country following all the agricultural projects, finally settling in Arvin in 1960. I myself worked out in the fields throughout my childhood and throughout my high school till I started my career out in the oil fields. It's where I started. I stand before you today in strong support of the innovative project proposed by CRC in the carbon capture storage industry. This initiative is not just a technical advancement. It will significantly impact our members and our community at large by providing high school jobs with fair wages and benefits. This project will strengthen the middle class, those who contribute the most in taxes and drive our local economy. Our members are the backbone of this community, supporting local businesses from stores to car dealerships and housing developments. Moreover, the benefits of this work extend beyond economics. Our members can invest in their families, engage their children in extra activities like sports and the arts, and enjoy quality time together on vacations and outings. Investing in this project means investing in a brighter future for our families and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all you guys for being here today.
Hello. My name is Cesar Aguirre. I'm the son of a union organizer, so it pains me to see that union members are being used as political pawns, and I'll demonstrate why. Significant and unavoidable impacts were mentioned, and jobs was one of the ways to mitigate that, but neither Lorelei nor the president of CRC mentioned that only 10 jobs would come of this project. Otherwise, there are possible speculative jobs. Lorelei also mentioned the threat of stranded assets, which in plain English are wells that CRC does not want to pay to clean up and would rather taxpayers clean. Monitoring for the lifetime of the project was also another framework, which is a 20-year permit, but carbon is supposed to stay underground forever, and the EPA is going to ask financial responsibility from a company that went bankrupt or filed for bankruptcy four years ago and asked for a $5 billion bailout. A Stanford study has showed that projects like these fail to catch emissions, showing that they only capture 10% to 11% of the emissions that they produced over 20 years. Confidence in the unreliable CRC reputation for emission control was also expressed. In the last 10 years, there have been 113 spills. Thirty-six of those spills to the California OES were just this year alone, demonstrating a 30%. 30% of the leaks were in this year, and that shows a drastic decrease in the quality of emissions control from the California Resource Corporation. The White House Environmental Justice Advisory Council has flagged CCS, or carbon capture, as a project that will not benefit a community, and Lorelei also mentioned that there was no groundwater threat. But the U.S. Department of Energy has said that carbon dioxide stored in deep geological reservoirs could leak through cracks during natural seismic activity. Kern is in the top 0.05 for FEMA's earthquake risk index, and Buttonwillow alone has had 688 earthquakes in the past 365 days. CRC has already lost a contract for carbon capture in this field back in 2014 due to their lack of transparency and not being honest about what stakeholders actually benefit from this project. Additionally, on my way out, I want to call out the bias demonstrated by the county in their presentation as they talked about comments in opposition, but did not talk about where the comments and support came from. Me personally, I've seen Kern Citizens for Energy have paid Instagram ads, and WISPA back in 2014 had a leaked document where they bragged about using Kern Citizens for Energy as paid propaganda. Let's not trust the people that want to manipulate our politics--
Thank you for your comments.
--and have a bad record--
We appreciate your comments.
--in a place where there is a high risk for earthquakes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Dave Teasell. I'm an executive director in the Workforce and Economic Development Department for the Kern Community College District, and in that role, I lead the 21st Century Energy Center. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the Carbon Terror Vault One project. I particularly am excited about the potential this project presents for creating good family sustaining wage jobs, especially in light of the job losses in the oil and gas industry. And we stand ready to fulfill our role in training and preparing workers for these jobs. That said, I do not want to downplay or diminish the concerns raised by the environmental community. We recognize this technology is still relatively new and needs to undergo further testing. It is vital that everything possible is done to protect our communities from any dangers or health risks, and I support a robust program of monitoring and community education in order to ensure we keep our communities safe. I'm not a scientist, but I've been working in the clean energy space since 2009, and our center has trained over 1,000 workers to work safely in this industry. From what I've learned, there is no one magic technology that will help us address climate change and help us achieve our carbon reduction goals. It's going to take a mix of numerous technologies to reduce the carbon to the levels that will keep this planet habitable. This project represents an opportunity to advance scientific knowledge in this area and to learn the possible role that this technology can have as a bridge to future low and no-carbon energy technologies. So let's advance scientific learning, let's put Kern County to work, and let's keep our communities safe. Thank you.
Thank you for comments.
Hello. Good morning to the board. My name is Carolina Wilsheer. W-I-L-S-H-E-R-E. I work for Ana Capa Engineering, and I'm here today to express my support for the Carbon Terror Vault CCS project as a resident and also as an engineer. As a Kern County resident, I'm very proud that this type of innovative technology is happening right here and implemented in our county. This project, like many other supporters have expressed, will allow us to take steps to fight climate change while bolstering our county's economy. Moreover, I believe that no one is better positioned than CRC to implement this project, given its resources and expertise. I highly recommend the board approve this project. And if you don't mind, I'm going to say it in Spanish. Hola a todos. Estoy aquí como residente y como ingeniera para ofrecer mi apoyo al proyecto de carbon terror vault CRC, CTV One, para la captura y el secuestro de carbono. Este proyecto no solo nos va a ayudar a reducir el cambio climático, sino que también va a promover la economía de nuestro condado. En este proyecto va a proveer un lugar donde poner el dióxido de carbono, que es el gas muy nocivo para el medio ambiente. Aunque entiendo la desconfianza de muchos con las compañías petroleras como CERSI, CERSI es la única empresa que tiene los recursos y la experiencia para implementar este proyecto. Nadie más lo puede hacer. Nadie más tiene los recursos. Por eso recomiendo que el Consejo apruebe este proyecto. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me pause you for just a second. We've had a couple people do this where they speak in English and then they speak in Spanish. We have interpreters here, so how do you feel about that? Are they getting-- theoretically, what I'm envisioning, and I don't know that it's happening here, is somebody could speak and say one thing in English and they could say entirely different comments in Spanish, therefore taking four minutes if they want. I'm trying to be fair to everyone.
Generally, I guess I'm of the nature to give the person benefit of the doubt that they're saying the same thing in English and Spanish. However, if there's any concern about that, because we do have so many interpreters, somebody could speak in Spanish and have the interpreter translated to English or vice versa.
Thank you.
That's up to you.
All right. Appreciate it. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Brian Holt, H-O-L-T. I'm here representing IBEW Local 428, and on behalf of the over 1,300 Kern County electricians and their families that we represent, we stand in strong support of this project. I'd like to start by commending Director Oviot and her staff with the diligent work that they've done on this project. And you're going to hear plenty about the economic benefits, and while I agree with and echo those sentiments, I'd really like to talk about CRC and the relationship that we've had with them. I'm sure plenty of developers and applicants come before you and say they're going to play nice and approve their project. Well, our organization has had the benefit of working hand-in-hand and shoulder-to-shoulder with CRC for the last decade, and we would be hard-pressed to find another company or organization here that is more committed to doing the right thing and being a community partner than CRC and now Carbon Terror Vault. Again, on behalf of the over 1,300 Kern County residents that we represent, we stand in strong support of this project.
Thank you.
Chair and the board, my name is Kiyoshi Timono. I work on behalf of Adventist Health and our central California network, which includes eight hospitals and 131 clinics across the-- eight hospitals and 131 clinics across the Central Valley. And we are big supporters of innovation and renewal and rethinking how we've always done things, not just because we've always done something, but we could potentially do something better. And that's why we're committed to supporting CRC and their efforts with the Terror Vault. We believe that clean air is important for everyone in this community and that we have to move forward and innovate in projects to make that a possibility. It's essential to the mission, and this initiative not only advances the ability for us to move forward with a sustainable future, but also promote healthier communities by improving the air quality across Kern County. Some of the folks here already have talked about leadership and how Kern County has always been the leader. Let us be a leader in changing and innovating in this space as well, and by embracing this new solution, we can create new energy solutions that will power not only Kern County, but the entire state and move the entire nation forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Brianda Castro with Central California Asthma Collaborative, a nonprofit serving the San Joaquin Valley. We are here to express our concerns for this Carbon Terror Vault project, and we urge the boards of supervisors to carefully consider the risks, the potential risks these developments pose to public health and safety. These projects present significant threats to air quality, especially for communities that have already been burdened by pollution for years. Residents in Taft and Buttonwillow, where due to our care is asthma program, are areas we know to have over 600 patients with asthma, COPD, and respiratory infections. Our Medi-Cal alone are already suffering from respiratory illnesses linked to poor air quality. These proposed projects threaten to add more harmful pollutants to air worsening the existing air crisis. I'd also like to address the lack of visible opposition here today who did not have the luxury to get their day paid to come stand or voice for their concerns. The very people who are part of the additional emissions, residents in these communities are out working in the agricultural fields right now. Their presence, their absence is not due to lack of concern, but rather a reflection of their day-to-day realities. It's essential to consider their voices in this decision-making process as they will be the most impacted by the project. The potential for leaks or unexplained movement of injection materials can have severe consequences for both the environment and public health. Here in Kern County, the ready current often emergency alert system is not enough to ensure that rural low-income communities are adequately protected in the event of a CO2 leak. Many residents are unaware of the system, and in an emergency, they could be left vulnerable without timely warning or access to safety measures. As already spoken, ADM detected potential movements of brine between formations in depth of 5,000 feet at their CCS site, as reported to the EPA just days later. Is it a cycle to show the unproceedable and risks associated with underground CO2 storage? Additionally, CRC, the operator behind these CCS projects, has a history of negligence when it comes to addressing methane leaks from their oil wells. Despite efforts to collaborate on emissions research, CRC has not taken adequate responsibility for their methane emissions, raising concerns about how they could handle the far more complex risks posed by CO2 storage.
Ma'am. I'm going to have to ask you to bring your comments to a close. I'll let you go.
I will wrap up. Thank you. We just urge you to prioritize clean air, public health, and real climate solutions. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Could you repeat your name?
Brianda Castro.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Julie Means, and I am a longtime Kern County resident. I am currently employed as the Health, Safety, and Environmental Manager for CRC over the Elk Hills Operating Complex. Prior to this current position, I spent more than 20 years as an environmental professional. I worked for nearly 10 years in public service positions within Kern County, including Eastern Kern Air Pollution Control District and then later the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. I served in these regulatory agencies in part due to my beliefs around both social and environmental justice and a desire to better my community. I want you to know that I passionately believe in the company that I work for now. The commitment of the board and the executive leadership is genuine, and we are steadfast in our mission to benefit our communities and the environment while we safely develop our assets and reduce carbon emissions. I witness this in my daily job, the decisions we make, and the support I receive in my role. Modern life is energy-intensive and continues to increase in energy demands. The carbon capture and storage benefits are critical for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and improving air quality, helping California and the world meet its climate goals while continuing to maintain our quality of life. The jobs in this industry are critical for our local economy, providing significant revenue and essential services while paying a high-quality living wage to industry workers, an average wage of $30,000 more than the county average wage. This living wage also allows for second chances to those that want to turn their lives around. As a resident, mother, a taxpayer, and both a social and economic justice, environmental justice advocate, I see the CCS project as an investment in our county's future that will help the people and both help people and reduce carbon emissions while advancing the clean energy projects and goals for California. I support the project and urge its approval, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, and thank you for letting me address the board today. My name is Stuart Heisler. I'm representing my firm, Anacapa Engineering and Design, Inc. I've lived in Bakersfield, worked as an engineer for the last 40 years. As a licensed engineer in the state, my first responsibility is safety of the community, and I don't take that lightly. I do believe this is a safe project. Although we know oil production's fallen nearly 50% over the last 10 years, there is actually good news on the horizon. We have several clients, each willing to spend hundreds of millions of dollars to build alternate energy projects in California, in Kern County, if and only if there's somewhere to get rid of the byproduct CO2. So if CRC is allowed to build the CTV One project, there are other people waiting at the doorsteps to come into Kern County, invest hundreds of millions of dollars, and pay millions of dollars in property tax. I highly encourage the board to approve this project.
Morning.
Greetings. Active morning. Calm down. All right. My name is Fitzgerald Graves. Greetings, respected board members. I'm a father, a grandfather, a Kern County member, and advocate. I'm also a graduate of Bakersfield College and California State University of Bakersfield. I was once a chair for advancement at Bakersfield College, and one of the things that you focus on is programs and projects and innovative activities and programs to benefit the community or the student body. And what that, from my perspective, change is something that, let me try this again. Change brings about a lot of uncomfortable feelings for some. Change also creates new opportunities for others. When we operate in a mindset of not, of being in a position of change, we're creating stagnant Change brings about a lot of uncomfortable feelings for some. Change also creates new opportunities for others. It's difficult for some to operate in traditional practices to accept instant or gradual change when they've been accustomed to doing certain things in a certain way. I mean, we could list a litany of examples throughout centuries where change was resisted what was absolutely necessary. I'd like to keep it more recent. Now, in modern days, wealth can be acued right from your living room. Going to work or the traditional way of working has now changed. We have to meet that with innovative ideas that can be accessed by all members of the community. The reason I'm supporting CRC today is because I'm thinking of my grandkids' future. I'm thinking about capturing CO2, and I'm thinking about how that impact will be 20 years from now. We can't operate in the past because the past is just that, the past. We must move towards a future. And although there are a lot of questions and concerns about this new innovative project, so were there when many other things came to par and we had to make a decision on the best moves, next steps, and best course of action. So I'm here as a member of the community, and I'm saying I support this permit, and I'm hoping that others will too. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Excuse me, sir. Could we get your name again, please?
Fitzgerald Graves.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Donna Herman. I'm the Senior Development Manager for the American Cancer Society. At American Cancer Society, we are the leading cancer-fighting organization with a vision to end cancer as we know it for everyone. We are improving the lives of people with cancer and their families as the only organization combating cancer through advocacy, research, and patient support to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to prevent, detect, treat, and survive cancer. We believe every individual should have the opportunity to live a happy and fruitful life. I think this project will be beneficial to the community and will help reduce carbon emissions and advance clean energy projects in the state. I support this, I support the approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Gracea Rosco. I'm here as an attorney with the Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment to comment and voice that the board should not approve this project. First, the environmental impact report does not disclose or analyze all of the carbon sources that will be required for this project pursuant to CEQA. Here, 50 million metric tons of carbon storage have been, are up for approval, and the only source that is provided would account for four of those metric tons. So that's just 10% of the project. This is not a shopping center. It's not whether there's going to be a Target or a Walmart. It's going to be the additional sources that will be contributing to the whole of the project. Not including that analysis is an illegal piecemealing of the environmental impact report. Second, the mitigation measures are incomplete due to the lack of the inclusion of the analysis of those additional sources. Third, we also have discussed the significant risk of carbon leakage due to this project. Here was cited the tragedy that occurred in Sutter's, Mississippi, due to a lack of regulation and improper location, but so too here we see the same thing, where we have an oil field with many different wells that can cause seepage into the groundwater or leakage into the air, which will expose many people to that risk. And additionally, we don't have the full protections of the SB 905 rulemaking yet to make that full protections available for this project. And lastly, the CRC is a company with multiple imposed fines and violations, the most recent, I believe, being this February, with the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. They were subject to fine for exceeding wastewater injections into underground drinking water sources in violation of the federal underground ejection control program, and this is the same company we're asking to today, putting our trust in for this type of project, this new technology that has not been thoroughly tested. For these reasons and many more in the comment letters that we have provided, the EIR is incomplete, it must not be certified, and this project must not be approved.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Leslie Torres, and I'm going to make my comments in Spanish.
I'm sorry. Your name again?
Leslie Torres.
Leslie Torres, thank you.
Buenos dias. Me llamo Leslie Torres. Nací y crecí en México. Soy ingeniera química y fui vocada por México para obtener una maestría de petróleo en el Reino Unido. Hace dos años yo emigré a los Estados Unidos y empecé a trabajar como ingeniera de pozos en CRC. Como empleada de CRC, estoy muy emocionada y entusiasmada por el potencial que tiene el proyecto de captura de almacenamiento de dióxido de carbono. En CRC estamos muy orgullosos de nuestro trabajo porque nos aseguramos de hacerlo de manera ética y segura para todos. Personalmente, yo estoy involucrada en asegurarme que nuestra compañía siga las regulaciones que nuestro estado tiene. CRC es pionero y visionario del futuro de producción de energía del condado de Kern. Nuestro proyecto de CCS intenta capturar e inyectar el almacenamiento permanente de hasta 46 toneladas de dióxido de carbono en formaciones de reservorio en Elk Hills. Por lo tanto, tiene el potencial de reducir dichas emisiones y crear un parteaguas para proyectos de energía limpia de los cuales nuestra sociedad será beneficiada. Por esto, yo apoyo y promuevo la aprobación de este proyecto. Thank you.
Good morning. I was born and I was raised in Mexico. I was brought here on a grant as an engineer from the UK. A couple of years ago, I immigrated to the United States, and I started to work as an engineer of wells within CRC. As an employee with CRC, I am super excited because of the potential that this project has on the carbon dioxide sequestration. At CRC, we are super proud of our work because we make sure to do it in a way that is ethical and in a way that is safe for everyone. Personally, I am involved in making sure that our company follows the regulations that our state has. CRC is a pioneer and a visionary for the production of energy within the county of Kern. Our project is CCS, starts or tries to capture the sequestration of carbon dioxide as a reservoir formation within this hills. It has the potential to be able to reduce these emissions and to create a parting of waters for clean energy for which that our society will benefit from. For this reason, I support and I promote the acceptance of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, board. My name is Ivan Ortiz. I am a long-life resident here of Kern County. I graduated from UC Santa Barbara with a degree in environmental studies, and I did my emphasis on energy and policy. From my time at UC Santa Barbara, I learned that for CCS to be beneficial, it must have an efficiency of 85 to 90%. To achieve this efficiency, more energy is used and more pollutants are released. And of my greatest concern is PM 2.5. That chart highlights a reduction in pollution, but does not highlight the federal standards we have yet to meet here in the San Joaquin Valley air basin. The earliest standard was set in 1997. It's four years older than me, and we have yet to meet it. I want to highlight recent events at the Archer Daniels Midland CCS project. A leak was caused due to the injection of liquefied CO2 into saline water. And here in Kern County, in oil fields, it has, there have been studies that the injection of produced water has increased the salinity of water in those oil fields. I also want to highlight my further concerns for this project, being what engineering safeties are being in place in case of the migration of the CO2 plume and what type of materials which are not, which are not highlighted in the report, besides it being highlighted as steel, as the alloy used at the Archer Daniels Midland CCS project was 13 chrome. And this material is being under investigation by the EPA as a potential leak point for the CCS projects. I want to finish with a mission statement from an article written by Dolores Huerta and Naomi Martinez, two big social and environmental advocates. Let's recognize this opportunity and stop any carbon capture permits before it's too late. Thank you.
Jeez, I'm sorry. Your first name?
Ivan. Ivan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Anna Montenegro. I'm an engineer, and I work for California Resources Corporation. I'm going to give this statement in Spanish, and if you would like, I can give it in English later or ask the translator to do it for you, for your peace of mind.
We'll let her do it.
Okay. So mi nombre es Anna Montenegro. I am an engineer. I work for California Resources Corporation. I have more than 25 years of experience, and I've been working for California Resources Corporation for around 17 years. Oh, I switched to English, right? Sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm not bilingual, but I grasped that wasn't Spanish.
Soy ingeniero de petróleos. Tengo 25 años de experiencia. Soy residente del condado de Kern por más de 17 años. Soy madre soltera y he trabajado en cuatro continentes, en Latinoamérica, en el Reino Unido, en el Medio Oriente, y aquí en Estados Unidos. Y he visto por mis propios ojos la alta calidad de seguridad que se tiene aquí en California y cómo CRC cumple los estándares más altos de seguridad y para cuidar el ambiente que en los otros cuatro continentes en los que he trabajado. Soy madre, soy hija, y estoy aquí generando energía en el condado de Kern de una manera muy, muy segura. Y por lo tanto, yo apruebo y le pido al consejo que apruebe este proyecto de captura de dióxido de carbono porque está sentando el precedente moviéndonos con la tecnología hacia el futuro. Estamos... Estamos moviéndonos hacia el futuro para nuestra familia, para la próxima generación con los más, con los estándares más altos de seguridad y de higiene. Entonces, gracias por su atención.
Thank you.
My name is Anna Montenegro. I work for California Services Corporation. I have more than 25 years of experience, and I've been around with this agency for about 17 years. Había dicho en inglés que ya llevaba unos 17 años con la corporación. I am a petroleum engineer. I have about 17 years, once again, and I've been living here in Kern for about 17 years. I'm a single mom, and I've worked in four different continents: in Latin America, the United Kingdom, and also here in the US. And I have seen with my own eyes the high quality of responsibility that there is here in California and how CRC has been abiding by the highest standards of safety and to take care of the environment than in the other four continents in which I have also worked. I am a mother, I am a daughter, and I am here working on energy projects in the county of Kern in a very safe manner. And because of this, I approve and I asked the board to approve this project related to carbon capture, carbon monoxide, dioxide, because it's moving us into the present, into the future. We are moving into the future for our families, for the next generation, with the highest standards of safety and hygiene. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Steven Fuentes, and I stand before you today representing Local 87, Teamsters here to support the carbon capture project. As someone who have lived in Kern County my entire life, born and raised right here in Bakersfield, California, I have seen firsthand the impact of our local industries on our community. For the past 20 years, I have worked in the oil industry as an equipment operator, oil field roster belt, a Class 8 driver. This industry has not only provided for me and my family, but has been also a cornerstone of our community, economy. The oil and gas sector has allowed me to support my kids and give them opportunities for a brighter future. The CRC Carbon Capture Project presents an incredible opportunity for our local workforce, especially for Teamsters Local 87. By embracing this innovative technology, we can continue to provide jobs right here in Kern County, also taking significant steps toward a healthier environment. The initiative will help ensure that my children and all of our children can breathe cleaner air and have access to quality education, paving the way for their success. Moreover, we are not just thinking about the present, we are laying the groundwork for our kids and generations moving forward. Together, we can create a sustainable future and empower families and strains of our community for years to come. Let us work together to make Kern County a leader in sustainable energy and job creation. Together, we can secure a prosperous future for our families and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good morning. Richard Chapman, the presidency of the Kern Economic Development Corporation. And our organization's mission is to promote and cultivate Kern County's balanced opportunities for business. And we're very proud to help market and promote the energy capital of California, if not the nation. And we do have, I believe, the most diverse energy portfolio of any county in the country. We're here to strongly support the CRC's Carbon Terra Vault One. If approved, this project will bolster Kern County's position as a leader in advanced energy solutions and would be the first of the kind, not just in California, but in the EPA Region 9. This project, I believe, will be a catalyst to attracting billions of additional investment because, again, this is the first of the kind, and so that will send the message of potentially bringing in billions of dollars of new investment from the outside, new money. Talk about new money in economic development, and it's crucial to the region's economic growth and sustainability. In addition, we have the perfect geography as well as the workforce, that transferability of skills, number four in the country for STEM jobs, the third most diverse economy for developing a viable and sustainable carbon capture industry. We talk about upward mobility, and we've heard about the average salaries for this industry. And that is what economic development is, workforce development and creating upward mobility opportunities for our residents. I respectfully ask you to support this critical economic development project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alyssa Reed, and I represent the Kern and Yomono Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm here representing our union affiliates and our more than 6,000 members. Today, I'm proud to speak in support of CRC and the Carbon Terra Vault One project. As Francisco mentioned, when you look at a partner and evaluate how they show up for you and how they reciprocate the partnership, CRC has shown up and worked with the trades for over a decade. And they've not only contributed to providing jobs for our members, but they've contributed in the workforce development and the continued development and job opportunities in the trades. So when we look at CRC as a partner, they are the kind of partner that we want to continue to work with and, sorry, my phone going off, that we want to continue to work with. And so we're here to support their project, show that it advances the environmental and the climate goals of our state and the innovation that they bring to the table. And so we want to speak in support of their project and urge you to approve the EIR and the conditional use permits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emil C. Corrales, and I would like to give my statement in Spanish.
Sure.
Me llamo Emil C. Corrales. He trabajado en CRC como contador de ingresos por tres años. No solo soy residente del condado de Kern, pero también soy hija de padres inmigrantes, madre soltera de dos niñas, una de ellas con discapacidad, con necesidades especiales. Trabajar en CRC me da mucho orgullo porque CRC es una compañía que siempre está en búsqueda de encontrar nuevas fuentes de producción de energía para el condado de Kern. Y a la vez, lo hace con una manera segura para todos. CCS crea más trabajos para nuestra comunidad y al mismo tiempo tiene el potencial de mejorar la calidad de aire. Yo apoyo el proyecto de CCS. Gracias.
Give me a quick second.
Good morning. My name is Emil C. Corrales, and I worked with CRC as a CPA for about three years. I am not a resident of Kern, but I am also the daughter of farmworker parents. I am a mother, one of them with special needs. Working at CRC gives me great pride because CRC is a company that is always looking to find new energy opportunities for Kern County, and at the same time, we do it in a safe way for everybody. CRC creates jobs for everybody in the community, and at the same time, it has the potential of improving the air. I approve the project of CRC. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm Vloggy Rodriguez. I'm appointed to the Board of Directors for the Kern County Fair. We believe that Carbon Terra Vault One project, that the Carbon Terra Vault One project would be good for Kern County and our community. CRC is a responsible company and energy provider and has been for many years. We support, we are in support of CRC's Carbon Terra Vault One project.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tunde Deru. Tango, yeah, I suspected that. Tango uniform, November Delta Echo. Tunde Tango uniform, November Delta Echo. Last name Deru, Delta Echo Romeo Uncle. Thank you. It's my pleasure to come before you today. I'm the president of Project Development Solutions, a local project and business development company here in Kern County. I also serve on advisory boards at the Bakersfield College and have been a resident of Kern County for the last 16 years. I'm here to fully support the California Resources Corporation and California Terra Vault project for three key reasons. First, this project presents a unique leadership opportunity and potential for Kern County. Kern County has been the leader in the extraction of oil and gas for over 100 years and has superior expertise in carbon management, specifically in carbon extraction. Kern County has been long hub in its expertise in managing carbon resources with the ability to safely inject gases into subsurface formation, making the county's unique position for the success of this project. Additionally, it has significantly contributed to Kern County's economic prosperity with billions of dollars over decades. These revenues have supported vital public services and infrastructure by leveraging its economic and technical expertise. I'm proud to call Kern County home, and I've had the opportunity to work in different places around the world in oil and gas, and Kern County supersedes in the excellence in which it extracts oil and gas. My second reason is the promise of economic prosperity. This project is not only about sequestration. It has several add-on opportunities that will be granted as a result of this pivotal approval of the sequestration. The project offers an opportunity to recover lost ground and preserve the county's economic well-being by transitioning into carb, into carbon reduction efforts. With the Biden Administration's infrastructure bill allocating billions specifically towards carbon management projects, Kern County is well-positioned to leverage this funding to fuel growth. This bill includes $12 billion dedicated to carbon capture utilization, storage initiatives, which Kern County can tap into, given its longstanding expertise in resource management. As a carbon sequestration, as a carbon sequestration, there are new opportunities for businesses like mine to repurpose resources and expertise from oil extraction to carbon ejection, securing a stable future for the county and its workforce. My third reason is about CRC. I had the opportunity in 2019 to start a business as a minority business owner, and CRC has been at the forefront of supporting minority businesses in the county. CRC's proven leadership in environmental and economic stewardship is evident in its consistent alignment with both federal and state objectives, long before 2019, when it had its charter about sustainability. This leadership was further validated by CRC's receipt of A minus from CDP, formerly Carbon Disclosure Project, for its 2019 climate disclosure, achieving a leadership-level score. CRC was the highest-ranked U.S. oil and gas company in its environmental transparency and performance, tying for the first among U.S.-based exploration and production companies with global operations. This recognition underscores CRC's ongoing commitment to providing sustainable, safe, and reliable energy. I am very proud to be associated with CRC, and I'm firsthand experience, I have firsthand knowledge of how they treat the environment. Finally, I'll leave you with a question. If not CRC, who? If not this project, what? And if not when? Now? Thank you.
My name is Sarah Orgel, and I'm here to represent the Kern County chapter of the National Electrical Contractors Association. Our chapter encompasses and represents over 100 electrical contractors, including many local firms dedicated to excellence in electrical construction. NICA contractors are known for their technical expertise, innovation, and commitment to safety. Our members hire local electricians who not only live in, but also contribute to their communities. This workforce is offered competitive wages, pensions, and comprehensive healthcare benefits. Additionally, our industry helps support and provide top-tier local apprenticeship training, creating sustaining, sustainable career pathways for residents and ensuring that earned dollars remain within this community, thereby bolstering the local community. Given the significant contributions from our industry to both the local workforce and the local economy, we strongly support this project. This project is essential for sustaining the high standards of our industry and fostering continued local development. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mary Cruz Amínez, and I was born and raised here in Bakersfield.
I'm sorry. Can you slowly repeat your name?
Mary Cruz Amínez, Mary Cruz Ramirez.
Mary Cruz Ramirez, thank you.
Numerous studies, such as the recent study published in the Energy and Environmental Science Journal by researchers at MIT, found that after taking into account the energy used to capture and isolate CO2, the carbon capture system would not reduce net emissions by the usual 80 to 90% estimate that is often cited by CCS supporters. Instead, it might reduce emissions by only 10 to 11%. It is a false solution that will keep business going as usual in a world that is innovating past us, contrary to the pretenses that have been spread by corporations. It is also argued that CCUS is a good idea because it depends on infrastructure that already exists, but that is a whole other problem that we never seem to discuss. Because when you think about it, why were these pipelines built where they were built in the first place? Why were they constructed in poor and working-class neighborhoods, communities of colors, communities of monolingual immigrants? Because we are the people who are constantly neglected and left in the dust. We are considered disposable and unimportant. I speak on behalf of my fellow community members who could not be here in the middle of a workday to remind you that no amount of revenue matters more than the lives and health of our community members. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. You'll be next.
I made it this time. I'm going to speak in Spanish.
Mi nombre es Palmira Hernández y trabajo para CRC como negociadora de terrenos. Hoy estoy aquí no solo como profesional sino como alguien profundamente conectada a esta comunidad. Kern is mi hogar. Nací y crecí aquí y llevo conmigo el legado de mi madre, que fue trabajadora campesina en Kern y no tuve la oportunidad de terminar sus estudios en México. Su arduo trabajo me enseñó el valor de las oportunidades. He visto de primera mano las duras condiciones que enfrentó y los sacrificios que hizo para brindarme una vida mejor. Su historia inspiró la mía y estoy agradecida de tener una carrera y trabajar para una compañía que produce energía de manera segura y responsable. Gracias a la inversión de CRC en sus empleados, pude obtener mi maestría en energía y utilizar la carrera para beneficiar proyectos locales. Pero eso no se trata solo de mi experiencia. Se trata de las historias de muchos otras personas en nuestra comunidad. Sería un error negarles la oportunidad de prosperar, de conseguir excelentes carreras, y de mejorar su calidad de vida. Proyectos como CTV van a expandir estas oportunidades, asegurando que más personas en Kern puedan disfrutar de los mismos beneficios que yo he tenido. Proyectos como estos no tienen que ver solo con el crecimiento económico. Se trata de transformar vidas. Tienen el poder de elevar familias, crear nuevas oportunidades laborales, y fomentar un sentido de orgullo en nuestra comunidad. Al apoyar esta iniciativa, no solo están aprobando un proyecto, están invirtiendo en el futuro de Kern y en los sueños de su gente. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Palmira Hernández, and I work for CTC as a person who negotiates plots of lands. Today, I am here not just as a professional, but somebody who is very connected to this community. Kern is my home. I was born and raised here, and I carry my mother's legacy, who was an ag worker, and she did not have the opportunity to be able to finish her studies in Mexico. Her hard work showed me the value of having opportunities. I have seen firsthand the difficulties that she has faced and the sacrifices that she has had to do to be able to give me a better life. Her story inspired mine, and I am super grateful to have a career and work for a company that produces energy in a safe and responsible way. Thanks to CRC's Thanks to CRC's investment, I was able to receive my master's in energy and be able to have a career to benefit local projects. But that is not just about my experience. It's also about the stories of a lot of other people who are in our community. It would be a great error to really not give them the opportunities to be able to prosper and to be able to better their quality of life. Projects such as CTV will be able to bring those opportunities to the grade that more people in Kern can be able to benefit from the same benefits that I have had. For these reasons, they have to do not just with that, but also with economic growth, but also transforming lives. It has the power to give families new opportunities and to really create a sense of pride within the community. And supporting this initiative, you're not just supporting the project, but you're investing in the future of Kern and in the dreams of its people. Thank you.
Thank you. Doctor, how are you?
I am Gordon Nip. I'm the Vice Chair of the Local Sierra Club Chapter. The oil companies are pursuing these projects purportedly to help address the climate crisis, extreme weather, long-term consequences, and existential threat. There's no question but what we need to effectively address the climate crisis. But carbon terror vault one is not effective. This project pulls carbon out of the ground, captures some of it, but emits a large portion of it back into our atmosphere as pollution, and then puts the captured part back into the ground where it came from. According to Table four point eight dash four of the EIR, carbon terror vault one enables the release of more than three times as much greenhouse gas into the atmosphere as it sequesters. If the carbon were just left in the ground to begin with, that would be a lot simpler and a more effective way of addressing the climate crisis. And there wouldn't be these additional dangerous emissions into the air. Instead, our atmosphere is degraded and the oil companies get eighty-five dollars a ton of taxpayer money, hundreds of millions of dollars per year, for sequestering the captured carbon by pursuing this convoluted scheme. Who's the winner here? The losers are the public and the taxpayers, who are wasting their money by funding the project. The project will create very few long-term jobs and our already terribly impacted air will only get dirtier. This project will allow California Resources Corporation to continue business as usual, to continue what UN Secretary-General Antonio Guterres calls, quote, "The madness of incinerating our only home." Say no to this madness. Turn this project down.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Supervisors, Planning Director, Planning Staff, and Counsel. My name is Suzanne Noble and I'm the Senior Director of Operations for the Western States Petroleum Association here in Kern County. As a resident and employee of the region, I'm excited about the potential for carbon capture and storage technology as it is the path of our energy evolution. This CCS project, and hopefully others like it, is a huge investment, huge, in Kern County's future, as well as helping to reduce carbon emissions and advance clean energy projects in our state. Some like to say that Kern County is on the map due to our county being the number one in renewable energy-producing county in the U.S., also being the number one oil-producing county in our state, thirteenth in the largest in the U.S., number one-producing region in the U.S., and best of all, the nation's or even the world's largest ice cream manufacturing plant, and the list goes on. But I don't think Kern County's on the map. I think Kern County is the map. And CCS technology projects like this one before you today is the future. And I think that CCS technology should be the county's new additional number one added to that list. The oil and gas industry has made significant progress in reducing emissions and advancing substantially and sustainably through cutting-edge technologies. Adding CC technology will only help California's climate goals and balancing energy needs with environmental stewardship. Please support approval of carbon capture and storage technology and the county's oil and gas industry today. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Anthony Osby, A-U-S-B-I-E, and I am the Director of the Kern County Electrical Apprenticeship. I am here on behalf of the apprentices in our program in support of the CRC Carbon Terror Vault One project. This project will directly benefit them and their families, but I also believe there will be a benefit to all of us collectively. The skills they will obtain working on a project of this nature and the projects to follow as this technology continues to improve will be beneficial to Kern County in the years to come. And in addition, I think innovative projects like the CRC Terror Vault One project will bring apprenticeship opportunities of the skilled trades to many of the residents of Kern County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Natalia Ospina. I'm here as the Legal Director for the Center on Race, Poverty, and the Environment. I'm here to echo many of the concerns that have been raised today about the carbon terror vault project and ask the board not to approve this because it will unnecessarily extend the life of the oil and gas industry and allow for new facilities to be built as new carbon sources. There are direct risks to our safety from this project from additional air pollution, pipeline leaks, induced earthquakes, and reduced water supply. These risks are not adequately studied or mitigated in the final EIR. For example, the county proposes no setbacks for carbon pipelines despite acknowledging the risk of pipeline leakage. There is also no real plan for fencing monitoring, only a general approval of a future plan without performance standards or performance criteria for what happens if harmful levels of air pollution are detected. All the open-ended and potentially meaningless measures that are to be developed sometime in the future are in violation of CEQA, which only allows agencies to defer formulation of specific mitigation measures if the agency can articulate specific performance criteria and make further approvals contingent on finding a way to meet them. As has already been mentioned, much of this technology has not even been shown to significantly reduce carbon emissions from polluting facilities, which is its main goal. In Australia, Chevron promised that its CCS project would capture eighty percent of its emissions, but it only captured thirty percent. In Canada, a CCS plant emitted more greenhouse gas than it captured. CRC has not explained how this project would be any different from those examples that have failed. If this project is similarly ineffective, it will force the county's frontline communities to bear the burden of ongoing pollution for years longer than is necessary. Kern must prioritize other direct emission reduction strategies instead of CCS. It's an unproven gamble with a long history of worsening air pollution and threatening public health and safety. Overburdened communities in Kern County should not be the guinea pigs for this technology. I urge you all to vote to not approve this project.
Can we give, can you give us your name again and spell it for us?
Natalia, N-A-T-A-L-I-A, Ospina, O-S-P-I-N-A.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Padilla. Padilla spelled P-A-D-I-L-L-A. I'm an employee of CRC and CTV in Kern County. I'm also a resident of Kern County and I'm excited to present or about the potential of our CTV One project. This carbon capture and storage project is not only an investment in Kern County's future, but it is also helping to achieve SB nine oh five's goals to help reduce carbon emissions and advance clean energy projects in our region and state. I kindly ask you to approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Greg Aktus. I am Director of Farming Operations of Elk Grove Farming Company in Buttonwillow, California, and I was also the ex honorary mayor. I'd like to start by saying the carbon terror vault is initiative that I'm fully behind. I have had the pleasure of visiting CRC's site to see possibilities that are to come with the carbon capture project. CRC sees how beneficial this can be for our missions. During a few roundtable discussions with our small community, CRC has addressed upcoming issues and been transparent on their approach. The creation of jobs and the reduction of greenhouse gases are not only good for our community, but will help Californians continue to thrive. We are in need of this terribly and the CRC has to offer our world and especially our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aktus.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chairman, Supervisors, and County Leaders. My name is Vivian Caou, C-A-O, and I am the President of the Kern County Asian Chamber of Commerce. I stand in strong support of CRC's CT One V project because it will continue to bolster Kern's position as an energy leader that's self-reliant and innovative and a natural producer of energy. In addition to CRC being a great partner to so many of our nonprofits and to your community at large, three additional benefits include the safeguarding of our local employment, protecting current jobs, and creating additional job opportunities, increasing public safety by providing funding from the sector, and maintaining our energy reliability so that we do not have to rely on imported oil. I strongly urge for your support for this project and I thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, as the Mayor of Taft, do you need more than two minutes representing all those people?
It'll take me fifteen minutes to let you know all the things I've done in my life, David. Chairman Couch and Supervisors, my name is Dave Noerr, spelled N-O-E-R-R. I am currently serving as the Mayor of the people of the City of Taft. I've lived in the City of Taft, not some other state, not some other region, since nineteen ninety-one. I've been there about thirty-two years. I've worked in this industry since nineteen eighty-one. I've been fortunate enough to raise my family and my kids. We live a outdoor-intensive activity level. We drink water from the hose and we still do to this day in the City of Taft, surrounded by ten thousand oil wells. Currently, the preponderance of scientific opinion says that we need to limit greenhouse gas emissions. That's CO2, methane, and we've been doing that. You hear this phrase "just transition" so often. Well, it's not just getting started and I don't believe it's transition. On a per capita basis, the CO2 footprint in the United States of America topped out in about the mid nineteen seventies. As far as the nation, our combined CO2 emissions topped out about two thousand and five, two thousand and six. Since then, it has dropped about twenty percent. At the same time, our population has increased about twelve and a half percent. So in that time period, we continue to provide a more carbon-intensive quality of life for more people with far less. What we're doing is improving efficiencies. We're using new technologies and that's what carbon management is about. That's what CO2 sequestration is about. The oil industry in San Joaquin Valley and City of Taft have been dealing with gases for a very long time. A component of oil production is hydrogen sulfide, H2S gas. Its IDLH levels are a hundred parts per million and yet we've safely navigated the production for all these years. I am confident that the producer, the owner, the industry, and the current workforce can efficiently and safely deal with CO2 just as surely as they have done with hydrogen sulfide. I support this project completely. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning.
Good morning, good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Matt Causa.
Good morning.
I'm a past honorary mayor of Buttonwillow. And I farm in the Buttonwillow area, land that my family's been farming coming up on a hundred years. So the well-being of the Buttonwillow people in the community are of the utmost importance to me and my family. I want to start by saying thank you to CRC for their efforts throughout this process. They've been more than helpful answering questions, holding seminars and presentations, and being as transparent as anyone in the Buttonwillow area could hope for. As complex as this project is, the people at CRC have done, in my opinion, an excellent job explaining and illustrating what their project entails and the vast amount of effort they've put in to ensure the safety of the project and most importantly, the well-being of the community of Buttonwillow. That being said, as a local farmer who spent a significant portion of my life in the Buttonwillow area, I'd like to be on record as being in full support of the approval and continuation of the carbon terror vault project and look forward to its completion. Thank you.
Supervisor Couch?
Good morning.
Members of the board?
Good afternoon, I guess, we're there now.
Les Clark, our esteemed Mayor, said that he's representing Taft. I'm representing Ford City, California. I'm the current District Administrator for Westside Recreation and Park District. Proud, proud person that represents that program. And without the oil industry, California Resources Corporation, we would cease to exist and times have been tough. And without them going shoulder to shoulder with us, our programs wouldn't flourish and we wouldn't be able to impact the kids positively in our community in general as it is now. We strongly support this project. We strongly support it due to workforce investment opportunities that are given by Westside Recreation and Park District and partnerships that we've been able to form with California Resources Corporation. We also support this project due to the fact that it provides economic opportunities. We just had a program that California Resources Corporation supported over the summer where we were able to employ fifty-nine young people from different universities and different areas of our community that they've been able to go out and be provided educational opportunities. Were able to come back and work in a program called STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and More. We've been able to sit at the table with the leaders of California Resources Corporation and other industry leaders and forge new opportunities for our community, community members that are looking to thrive and still be a part of our community. And without the industry and without these partnerships, we wouldn't be in such good shape. So we strongly support California Resources Corporation. We appreciate Lorelei and the staff's hard work at this exhaustive research that they've been able to put together. But it's, you know, very good. And I'll leave you this because being from Ford City and being the number two Les, we have to say things every once in a while that may arouse some folks. And I'll just leave you this, figures don't lie, but liars do figure. You know, so we gotta work hard to make sure that we understand what the truth is and what is is what is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Emmanuel Campos and I'm here today to echo the overwhelming support you have heard already here today for the Carbon Terror Vault CRC CTV One project. Also come here to tell you a short little story about the West Side, which is seen through my lens. The lens of an immigrant and son of farmworkers who was born and raised in Michoacan, Mexico and arrived in America in nineteen eighty-eight. I'm a graduate of the great Taft Union High School. I'm a graduate of the University of California, Berkeley, and a graduate of the University of Texas with my masters. I'm raising six childrens on the West Side who have attended or have actively attended McHittrick Elementary, only four and a half miles from these sites. I'm also a landowner. I own acreage out of McHittrick. I've raised my family out of McHittrick. We've heard from the much-due-diligence and subject matter experts already here today. I'm not here to echo these experts. You've already heard from the engineers that have stood up here and spoke to you about all the safeguards and all the regulations. We have a great presentation that we've had opportunities to hear in our communities. I'm also come to you as an entrepreneur, owner of Monarch Fleet Services, a California Minority Certified Business that has been doing business on the West Side since nineteen ninety-seven. We're a business that also has vision and look to the future. We envision a vibrant downtown on the West Side in Taft where kids can have bike shops that can help them equip them and help them fix them. For you see, our children are not only academically inclined, some of them also carry their brain in their hands. And with vocation and apprenticeship programs, it's very important for us to have kids that have opportunities to raise their families in the future. See, for investment is important to our country, our county, and our communities. We have that vision for the future and I do some consulting as well for the West Side Recreation and Park District. You've already heard from Les Clark. We are in need of support and it's projects like these that'll bring support and it's projects like these that'll turn the tide and put us in a path to increase our economy, diversify our economy, serve the underserved and the often ignored historically. People have talked already about spills of eighty-four gallons, a hundred gallons. People have talked already about spills of 84 gallons, 100 gallons. You know, what we haven't heard about is 116,000 metric tons that have been spilled in our ocean since 2018 by tankers that bring the supply of oil from other countries that don't have our best interest at hand, our national interest. We have, it is our duty both to speak and know that correlation does not imply causation, and we have to look at the unintended consequences of reactions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other public speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll return it to, I'll ask Ms. Oviad if she has any comments or responses she would like to put on the record before we go to the board.
Thank you, Chairman Couch. Through the chair. Clearly, there was a lot of information provided to you. I want to answer this in three different categories. The first category is I want to address process. Second, I want to address environmental concerns, and then I want to turn it over to County Council for a response on the legal sufficiency of the process and the EIR.
Before we get there, about how long do you think that'll take? What I'm thinking is maybe it's time for us to take a short break.
I certainly would like a break.
Okay. What? It's 12, I have 12:16, so let's get started again at 12:30.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So let me call the meeting back to order. Thank you. The public hearing has concluded and we were about to go to Ms. Oviat and staff for comments.
Thank you, Chairman Couch, members of the board. So, starting with process, there was an unfortunate statement that implied that staff said that comments from people who live in Delano or Lamont don't matter. There is no evidence and no one from this department or the county ever said that those comments don't matter. The comment she's referring to at the Planning Commission was that there is no science that the CO2 would travel that far. And the comments I was referring to were comments where people in those communities said, "We are worried about CO2, it could kill us." So, I just want to be clear, all comments matter? We've included the thousands of comments provided, whether they're from any place in the United States, California, or Kern County, or Southern California, into the record, and you have them exactly as they were submitted to us. Second thing I want to clarify is the accusation that the staff of the Kern County Planning Department somehow takes money from oil and gas. Not only do we not take any money, the leadership of this department, which is myself, Lorelei Oviat, the Director, and Craig Murphy, the Assistant Director, as well as the staff, don't own any stocks in any development. It's part of our conflict of interest. We have filed Form 700s, and you can see them online. And for the last 29 years of my employment with this county, I have a personal policy of not accepting even a cup of coffee paid for by a developer, consultant, an engineer, an applicant, even ones that are personal friends of mine. I have not gone to lunch, they have never paid, and I take exception to an accusation when it is well-known. We don't visit their offices, all meetings are held at the Planning and Natural Resources Department, and my staff's integrity is important to any process. Do applicants pay for all of this? Yes. Solar projects, wind projects, housing projects, under the government code, that money does not go to the personal staff. It goes for the time and materials, and the general fund, and the reimbursement. So, I want to clarify some of the environmental issues that were brought up. These are actually some important questions that we need to answer. First, my statement about stranded assets was misinterpreted. Stranded assets that I was referring to. A stranded asset is a financial commitment, a building, something that you own, that has no real value anymore, and therefore, for a company, it's on their books, but it's not going to generate any revenue. It's stranded. It has no value. The stranded assets I'm talking about are not the abandonment of wells, since that is a requirement of state law, and CRC is obligated to do that. I'm talking about the Elk Hills Operations and Maintenance Building, the corporate headquarters. I'm talking about the Elk Hills Power Plant. I was referring to the CP, the CGP-1 facility. All of those pay property taxes, especially the power plant. And those then become stranded assets of what's going to happen to them? They are not able to pay, and they are reassessed down, and it's a loss of revenue to the county. So those are the stranded assets I was referring to, if oil companies are not permitted to innovate. So, issues were brought up about the CO2 going into the air. As a reminder, the project before your board is site-specific. Many of these comments are about a policy complaint, about whether your board should support any carbon capture and sequestration project. We aren't bringing a policy discussion to you today. Your board, of course, if you have some other thought about it, can make a referral to me, but at the end of the day, this project is before your board. That CO2 is already going into the air. That power plant produces 500 megawatts. If it goes out of existence, that's 3,500 acres that it would take to replace the solar, and that would not be long-duration, besides the fact that solar doesn't pay the same tax revenue, as we've discussed. Therefore, that CO2 is already going into the air. If they don't capture it all, it'll go into the air. If they don't do this project, it'll go into the air. In the case of this project, it would be captured. A percentage of it would be captured and sequestered permanently, thereby enhancing the environmental benefits of the 500-megawatt natural gas power plant, which has a permit from the CEC through 2045. There's no more permitting that's needed on that power plant, which produces electricity for all of us. I did want to address a comment that was made, perhaps it was a misstatement, that we have no setback for pipelines. As a reminder, we have a setback for the pipelines. It's mitigation measure 4.3-6, sorry, 4.9-4, which requires that the pipelines be set back a minimum of 1,367 feet from the property line of any non-project parcel. In addition, statements were general, statements were made about all these pipelines that are going through communities. This pipeline will be completely within the Elk Hills oil field, completely within the 9,000-acre CUP boundary. There are no pipelines from this project that are going to go through communities. And there is no proposal for your board to do that. I have no other obligations that would do that. And so this seemed like more of a general statement of concern on other issues. Second setback is, the Class 6 wells, again, must be 4,000 feet from any sensitive receptor. The seismic issue was brought up. We have an extensive analysis of seismic. What is the point of the seismic? Well, there's two issues. One is, you know, will pressurization of this cause more earthquakes? And if there is an earthquake, will it cause something to leak? I'm being simplistic, but that's the point of a concern about seismic, since earthquakes happen. We have our Global Response 7, which is induced seismicity. We have stuff, you know, extensive analysis in the Environmental Impact Report. In addition, we have a mitigation measure, 4.7-1, which requires the implementation of the state carb requirements, that there will be seismic monitoring wells, they will be hooked into the statewide system, the state will monitor those. If there is any magnitude 2.7 or more earthquake within a mile of any of this, they will do an after-earthquake safety integrity of all of those wells, of the wellbore. If the state of California, under the SB 905, determines that there's an earthquake of a particular size, they will immediately tell them to stop injecting, and they will be required by conditions, mitigation, and SB 905 to do that. So there is an entire world of seismic monitoring, 10 monitoring wells, and people, and oversight. In addition, that is part of the US EPA/UIC. So, in regards to the comment and the question about the steel that was used in the ADM Illinois injection that corroded, first I'd like to point out, once again, that is saline, that is saltwater. This is not saltwater, this is not a saline injection. Does the steel matter? Of course it matters. However, the US EPA/UIC permit is required before anything is built. This is not the only approval that's necessary. Your board must approve this project. Then there are multiple mitigation measures that require not just a permit from the EPA/UIC, but they have a three-step process, too. First, there's pre-testing, pre-monitoring, they try it, then there's a construction permit they have to go through. There are multiple requirements, and every single one of those, my department needs to check the box. Did the EPA give us that? Did the EPA give us that? This is a long, complicated regulatory mechanism. I have hoped that in the conditions in the mitigation measure, I've created a structure that is clear and transparent for both the public and the applicant, so the applicant can check the boxes as we go along. And the issue of what steel would be in that is covered, and it's preliminary right now, but there will be a final permit in Appendix E2, which is the US EPA Class 6 Underground Injection Control Permit Application Narratives for Elk Hills. We have confidence in the expert judgment of the US EPA. This is what they do, they're there to protect drinking water. So we are confident that the issue of corrosion and that steel, whatever they learn from the ADM project, will be implemented through this. Somebody has mentioned a 2014 application for CCS. Planning has, the Planning and Natural Resources Department has no information and no application from 2014 for a CCS project in Elk Hills, and we do not know what they're referring to. All right, lastly, the energy. So as I said, there are general policy complaints about CCS. Many people stood up and said, "You just shouldn't do it. Uses more energy than it's worth, you can't collect the CO2." We agree. We agree that there are trade-offs that need to be carefully considered in these projects, and we are only bringing you the first project. In this project, however, the trade-off is, so that, what are the two trade-offs? One trade-off is, it uses a lot of energy to capture. The second trade-off is, is once again, we're going to have land with restrictive use on the surface, just like solar, that is not going to pay taxes normally, cannot assess taxes from the pore space. And as a reminder, which your board is very aware, but perhaps the public isn't, every time you abandon a well, it reduces the property tax roll. So while abandonment of wells is something that perhaps the other side, opposition to oil and gas, would like, it will not provide money for the general fund, for all the services that you need. And carbon capture could set aside hundreds of thousands of acres that don't pay any taxes. And that, combined with solar, will not create a future of economic vitality for us. So we need to be careful about these carbon capture projects. This site-specific one uses energy from the Elk Hills Power Plant. To make the Elk Hills Power Plant environmentally better by capturing the CO2, thereby extending its life, also providing for a new type of carbon capture area in Kern County that could potentially provide for the future of other industries who might be interested in coming here, but who we don't have here yet. Lastly, I would, two things before we turn it over to County Council. I would like the Chief Duncan to come and give us his opinion in regards to the safety of the mitigations and the extent. I'd like to note that he has verified to me that Reddy Kern does also transmit in Spanish as well as English.
Morning, Chief.
Good morning, or afternoon.
I keep saying good morning, sorry.
Good afternoon, Chairman Couch and distinguished members of the board. You know, here in Kern County, we have a long and extensive history of permitting pipelines. That's just kind of our history. We have a strong fire prevention bureau. They've taken on solar, battery energy storage, solar, wind, you know, they're cutting-edge on new technology, and this is just another front that we are embracing. I am confident in the mitigations that have been presented to you today, and I'm confident that it is permitted properly. I believe we can ensure a safe operations, not only for the public, but also for our Kern County firefighters. I just want to reiterate a couple of the requirements that will be required in the mitigations. Automatic shutdown valves equipped with pressure sensors, temperature sensors, flow meters, vibration sensors, equipped with infrared sensors and cameras that can project thermal imaging. We will have 50, every 50 feet, you will have a shut-off valve to turn this pipeline off. 1,367 feet of offset from any property line. And notification, most important, notification to authorities of Kern County Fire and Public Health of any type of shutdown or any irregularity in this pipeline. And of course, as was stated, there will be, money is available to the Kern County Fire Department for training and equipment, so that our Kern County firefighters have the best equipment and training to respond to these type of emergencies. This concludes my comments.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much. I'd like to turn it over to County Council for a sufficiency of the legal process and the SEQA. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board members. I'd like to introduce Jennifer Hernandez, who's a partner with the law firm of Holland and Knight, and I'm going to ask her to address these matters.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's, again, an honor to be here with you and to assist Kern County in its many, many activities that benefit the state of California well beyond your borders. I wanted to address two legal issues that were mentioned by several of the opponents of this project. One was whether the project was accurately described, was the absence of potential future customers, effectively, sources of CO2, a problem under what's called piecemealing, hiding a piece of the project, so you can avoid disclosing or analyzing the bigger project. This project description was legally adequate, and there was no piecemealing. There is no requirement in SEQA to comprehensively identify or speculate around the identity of future projects that don't exist, that aren't in front of the county. The county has adopted a regulatory scheme in a mitigation measure approach with this project that requires the county to accept applications, process applications, do full SEQA for applications, before anybody can put CO2 into this facility. No such applications are pending. Chasing that kind of issue, a nonexistent issue, actually, is one of the unfortunate ways that SEQA sometimes gets abused. There's a really important section of SEQA, 2108.3.1, which the legislature enacted There's a really important section of SEQA, 2108 3.1, which the legislature enacted in the 90s, directing courts to not interpret or apply SEQA to impose any procedural or substantive requirement that's not expressly set forth either in the statute adopted by the legislature or in the guidelines, the regulations adopted by the state agency administering SEQA. This kind of requirement that all future sources be identified before you can process anything is simply not in existence in the guidelines or in the statute, and it's not a deficiency under SEQA, either project description or piecemailing, which are mirror images of the same legal theory. The second and last of the legal issues I wanted to address is the extent to which the EIR sufficiently analyzed the risks of leakage, either gradual or acute. There's, I'm going to guess, something like eight feet worth, linear feet worth of binders on the counter that comprise the record, the EIR record, that was created to evaluate this project. It includes multiple volumes that are simply responses to comments. This is an innovation technology. Innovation technologies, by definition, aren't settled. We know a traffic light works. What we need for innovation technologies are expert studies. There are expert studies all over this record, and there are disagreements among experts. Opponents' experts believe more or different measures should have been undertaken, but once a lead agency commits to do an environmental impact report, the fact that there are disagreements among experts, which happens all the time, is noted, but the lead agency, your agency, is authorized by SEQA to rely on its own experts, provided there's substantial evidence in the record. And there is substantial evidence in the record, in the many thousands of pages in the record. So leaks have been evaluated, leak risks have been evaluated, monitoring is required, corrective measures are required. And the last point I'll make on this system is innovative technologies often require multiple regulatory agency approvals and fall under the jurisdiction of multiple agencies. It's not like just building a house, which you guys at the county level do, inspect, approve. Complicated projects like this one, innovative projects like this one, involve multiple agencies. The two, of course, that are most relevant are US EPA, which has national jurisdiction to regulate underground injection wells of the type used to put CO2 back into the ground, as well as Caljam, which has lots of jurisdiction over parts of this project. It is legally the case that the lead agency, typically a local city or county, is entitled to rely on other agencies doing their job, enforcing and implementing their own regs. This county, belt and suspenders, has mitigation measures that actually go beyond mere compliance with regs. But compliance with regs for expert agencies charged with making sure underground injection wells are safe, that they don't adversely affect drinking water, you've got a regulatory partner on this project at US EPA who is fully engaged, and nothing can happen until or unless EPA approves its underground injection well permits for this project. So you're entitled to rely on other partner agencies enforcing their laws and regs, and you've gone beyond that in this EIR by also having your own mitigation measures. So in, in the legal frame of, has the county complied with SEQA? The answer, from our perspective as your outside counsel, is yes.
Thank you. There is a revised, there is a revised recommendation. Certified the recirculated environmental impact report. Adopt revised Section 15091 Findings of Fact and Section 15093 Statement of Overriding Considerations. Adopt revised mitigation monitoring reporting program. Adopt resolutions, recommended findings, and enact ordinance approving the zone changes as requested. Adopt resolution and recommending findings, approving conditional use permits subject to recommended conditions.
Thank you. Supervisor Peters touched in first.
Thank you, Chairman. It's kind of funny to talk about all this 13 chrome pipe and what the concerns are with that. I've installed a lot of 13 chrome pipe personally, and the only thing that's ever endangered is a good night's sleep, because that stuff takes forever to screw together so you don't mess the threads up on it. But it's resistant to corrosion from CO2 H2S, so I get why they'd use it. It's the right tool for the job. But I just wanted to note that some of these groups that are coming down and speaking against this project, I mean, they, they do this all the time. They're throwing stuff against the wall to see what sticks, but they're not bringing any projects down here. I don't see any projects from them that are creating jobs that are doing anything to benefit the environment. So, I mean, I would welcome that if they have any ideas. I definitely don't have all the answers, but continually coming down and trying to tear apart projects without bringing any solutions forward is just counterproductive. And I was really surprised by this argument that this infrastructure for the oil industry is being purposely located in underserved communities. I don't know if anything's changed since I was in the oil fields, but we usually cite infrastructure equipment for the oil industry where there's oil. And I'm pretty sure that's still the case. That oil's been under those hills a lot longer than we've been on top of them. So I want to thank CRC for investing in our community, for bringing this project forward. I want to thank our staff for all the diligence and the hard work and effort to put this together, and I appreciate all the effort on it, and when it's appropriate, I'll make a, make a motion on it.
Supervisor Flores.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Chairman, for guiding us through this long meeting, and it was very meaningful, and I appreciate everyone that have come out and has spoken. Thank you, Director Oviot, for your expertise and your staff, and thank you, Council Hernandez, for walking us through the mitigations and the legalese and the piecemailing, because that was one of my questions. You've answered a lot of them already. And these 15 binders shows you that the thoroughness of Kern County and how we approach big projects like this, that we are stewards of the environment, that we do listen to all sides. You know, that 30-year proven track record of other projects means a lot, and I, I welcome this first of its kind in California to be here in Kern County, because no one does it better, safer than us. We are the innovators, and I'm proud. I'm proud. I make, I make, I'm not an apologist. I'm proud of our oil sector. I'm proud of the energy it produces, as is now, because we're first-world country. We need energy. We need national security. This fuels our homes. This fuels our transportation sector. This fuels our economy. It fuels Kern County. It provides jobs. And I think it's really, it's a morally arrogant position to say that your jobs don't matter. Your jobs matter, just like anyone else's jobs. You provide for your family. You provide for your, your children. You provide for this county, quite frankly, because our county is dependent upon these revenues from our diverse oil sector and energy sector and wind sector and geothermal and what have you. So this is just, we talked about evolution. This is another step in that direction. And even if you accept the premise of carbon neutrality, which, by 2020, I mean, by 2040, we do have to make certain goals and expectations become reality, but even if you accept that, that, it was ushered out with this whole promise of just transition, just transition. This is part of that equation of just transition, is carbon capture, of sequestering CO2, of doing it safer. But even with just transition, it's still not good enough, according to the opponents. Just transition doesn't matter. So, I mean, what's next? Are we going to have subsequent just transition? At what point does our county and our people have the right for self-existence, a right to work? We talk about a right to water, a right to healthcare, a right to this and that. There is fundamentally no better right than the right to work, to be employed. How much better to be employed in a sector that values safety, that has technology, that's giving us a lifeline for the next 100 years to do it our way? And so I want to applaud those that have come out. I also applaud your corporate social responsibility, your investment, your philanthropy, and what you provide our community. It pains me when I read the newspaper and I see a house for sale and whole segments of a workforce out of a job, vacancies, people not buying cars, people not eating at restaurants, people moving to Houston. I don't want people to move to Houston, and I love Texas. I want people to stay in Kern County. I want people to stay in Bakersfield. I want people to achieve the American dream. This project represents that and so much more. We talked about speculative economics. There was a gentleman, I think it was Stuart Isler, who came before us and said that there are real investment opportunities that he's heard about, that they can come over, that can coalesce near this project, and there's new economies that can springboard from this. So I'm excited about the, the future, what it holds, and I want to applaud everyone involved, and thank you for letting me just say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chair. My colleagues Peters and Flores just said, took the thunder right out of my, my comments, but it was absolutely brilliant, very well-stated. Thank you for that. You know, this is really a watershed historic milestone moment in Kern County, because Kern County continues to exhibit the pieces, the widgets necessary to be on the cutting edge of any industry whatsoever. And it is not possible without actual and true partnership like we see with CRC. And I'll tell you, in my 15 years of being up here through the Planning Commission and as a supervisor, I have not found a better partner than CRC. And that's quite a statement, and I mean it with a full heart of gratitude and of objectivity, because Kern County has many challenges while we have remarkable assets, number-one oil basin in the world, number-one producer of renewables in the country of a count, of a country of 3,069 counties, right? Right here in Kern County, does over 60% of the state's renewables, one county? Your, your elbow grease, early mornings, right, for your children, to hold your head up, that new car smell, all of that, all of that, right here in Kern County, on the cutting edge. We're 60% of the state's renewables, with $80 billion in international investment. We, we, we host the French, the Germans, the Canadians here all the time. They say, "Kern County, you guys are the experts." And now we have this remarkable oil basin. We have the stakeholders, the, the brain power, and the workforce that is bar none to stay on the cutting edge of the energy portfolio needs of the fourth-largest economy of the world. I'll tell you, it's an exciting moment. I do believe my colleagues laid out brilliantly the reasons why this county is so excited about this project, because what it takes from a planning department to, in the most brutal, expensive, and extensive regulatory structure in the nation to do business, we do it right here in Kern County. We lead the energy portfolio, not just in, in fossil fuel extraction, and we are the cleanest per SEQA. SEQA demands that we are the cleanest in the nation, and that's a good thing for California, because what we put out, what we put forward is legitimate. It is legitimate, and it is the best that human beings that are existence right now, with all of the personal interests, with all of the stakeholders, trying to figure out how they stay alive in business and how they keep the lights on. It's happening right here in Kern County. I'm excited. I want to say to our partners at CRC and your remarkable government representative in Nicole Para, who has employed her own family and a whole host of characters in this community who know the community, who care about the community, have been here a long time to see the changes, to see our neighbors lose their jobs, to see, to get the notices here, 200 families laid off, 100 families, 50 mortgages. It is devastating what has happened to Kern County under a political agenda targeting us for, I believe, political purposes, when we are the leaders and the experts of the world. Thank you to my colleagues. Thank you, Chair. I think this has been a meaningful process. I have to echo Supervisor Peters in saying that I don't hear any ideas at all. I don't know if we're, we should go back to horse and buggy. I don't know what world you live in, but the target is always moving, and Kern County is on the cutting edge of continuing to meet that target and deliver above and beyond. Jennifer Hernandez, bar none, nobody better, and our team leads the charge for Kern County families, working, creating jobs, rising tide lifts all boats. Kern County leads the way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to belabor it. I want to thank the people that came today to speak, all of you on both, on both sides. I particularly want to thank the people that live and work in the area around and near this, this project. Specifically, we had the mayor of Buttonwillow, excuse me, the mayor of Maricopa, the mayor of Taft, who is still here, thank you, David, and we also had one of the honorary mayors of Buttonwillow. You know, those farmers kick the tires on this project pretty good, and it, it means a lot when the people that live and work in those areas show up and support a project, so I appreciate them doing that. With that, I see no other comments. This isn't the fourth district, but Supervisor Peters, I will allow you to make that motion if you'd like to.
I'll, I'll go ahead and do it. Thanks, sir.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor? Or please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you for that. I just need a motion to adjourn to October 22nd, which is tomorrow at 9:00 AM.
So moved.
No objection, adjourn.